Okay, Madam Mayor, for ten, we can begin.
Well, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. I apologize for being a little bit late. We had some technical issues here this evening. So, let me get my pages straight here. So tonight, we're going to have our invocation by City Manager Erin Adams, and I will be leading the flag salute. So if you will all stand, please. Erin, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Would you please bow your head? Dear me Father Lord, I just give you thanks for this day. Give you thanks for the privilege of living and working in the city of Temecula and serving the 114,000 people that we're working for. Lord, I pray over our country and COVID-19 global pandemic, healing of individuals far and wide. I pray for our county, our state, locally here as our city, as we continue to move forward in reopening our economy and the health and safety of our residents and our business owners. I lift them up in prayer, Lord. And I'd also be remiss if I did not lift up our first responders and our police and fire personnel, and the men and women that are serving on the front line, especially today and last week and the week ahead. Those that are on the front lines battling wildfires in Northern California and other parts of the state, Lord, I pray for their protection. Bring them home safe to their families and their communities. And Lord, I just pray over wisdom and discernment for this city council meeting, the city staff, as we take care of the business of the city at hand. And with this, we glorify you and all that we say and all that we do, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Erin. So if you would please put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all." Okay, thank you. I can just see you all standing at home doing the pledge of allegiance. It's kind of cool. Could we please have the roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor Potem Edwards. Here, Councilmember Nigari. Councilmember Ron. And Councilmember Shwank.
I'm here.
All right, so do we have any public comments?
We do, Madam Mayor Potem. We actually have 72 comments.
Seventy-two?
Yes, so if you would like to go ahead and read the rules.
I will.
Let's start going.
Okay. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of this agenda. All right, so let the reading begin.
Yes, Mayor Potem Edwards. We actually received several comments on defunding the police and the topic of law enforcement. That item is not on the agenda and with the concurrence of the city attorney. I am reading those under the non-agenda item public comments. As well, we have several comments in regards to rescinding a resolution that was adopted by the city council at the last council meeting. There is no rescission on tonight's agenda, as such, those are also being read under non-agenda items. And there's maybe three of these comments that, in passing, mention item number nine. I will go ahead and point those out to you as well. The first speaker is Robert Gury. "Be half of our community, we are supporting our policemen and policewomen and Blue Lives Matter." Peyton Holsey. "Dear City Council, I am writing this email in regarding to defunding our law enforcement. I believe that they go beyond the call of duty every single day to protect our citizens of this great city. I do not support the funding, the defunding of our law enforcement. If anything, we need to give them more funding. Being a female, I want to feel safe in my city. I think our law enforcement is doing a wonderful job of keeping our city clean and safe for all of the residents of Temecula. I would like this email to be read at the next city council meeting on the date of August 25."
Just to clarify, there's nothing on the agenda about defunding? And really, we've never discussed defunding, so.
Yes, there is nothing on the agenda that is related to law enforcement services or any funding related to law enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Laura Holsey. "I was unaware of item number seven, resolution number 2020, at the last council meeting. Otherwise, I would have written an email for that meeting. We live in a wonderful community where law enforcement is appreciated beyond measure. Riverside County Sheriff, law enforcement protects us and keeps our city safe. I have never in my 30 years of living in this town heard differently. I voted for extra taxes so we could have more protection. I want to feel safe in my home, safe to go shopping at night without looking over my shoulders, sending my 17-year-old daughter to run errands without thinking who or what is waiting out there to harm her. There are cities around us where going out at night doesn't happen, period. I am a homeowner and want what is best for our small-town feel city. I refuse to support any plan that could lead to our town changing. I cannot nor will I stand aside to let any agenda item defund our law enforcement. I want law enforcement as it is now and should continue to be." I would like this to be read at the next city council meeting, Tuesday, August 25. Next speaker is Mary Carpenter. "My husband and I are 40-year residents. I need the council to know that we support law enforcement in Temecula. We voted for the extra tax to increase to support more law enforcement. Please do not make the stupid mistake that is happening in our country by taking the first steps to defund our law enforcement. We do not want law enforcement defunded in any way. Thank you to all our law enforcement officers for keeping us safe and placing your life on the line for us. If you choose to break the law, there are consequences for your actions. Keep Temecula safe with law enforcement. I would like my comment read at the next city council meeting on August 25 to reflect my feeling for the city council. Thank you, Mike Nigari, for everything you have done for our community. It breaks our heart that you will no longer be on the council representing us." The next speaker is Dave Van Lees. "Please keep activists out of our community town management. None of the referenced crimes happened in Temecula and are not relevant to our community. Use your time wisely. You work for us all. All men are created equal and should be treated equally. End of topic." The next speaker is Craig Weaver. "I want to go on record as supporting our local sheriff. We need to increase our support and add more money." Next speaker is Ellie Clow. "I support current law enforcement, and I do not want them defunded. When we talk about the role of police in society, it is vital to recognize the need for police in society. There needs to be a professional police force that acts with the authority of the government to administer justice. There are still crimes that take place in society, and we need the police to respond to those crimes. Police officers play a vital role in protecting us and keeping us safe." Next speaker is Marsha Weaver. "I completely support our law enforcement and absolutely do not want them defunded. I beg you all to use the intelligence God gave you and keep our police force as it is or even increase it if necessary." The next speaker is Carol Shelton. "I support law enforcement and don't want them defunded. Please be so kind as to have my wishes read at the August 25 council meeting. In fact, please tell them refund, police pay more. Thank you so much for all you do." The next speaker is Connie Power. "I've enjoyed living in Temecula for the past almost 20 years, mostly because of the law and order that has maintained there. Graffiti is covered up instantly, zero tolerance for bad behavior, safe town to live in and walk the streets. That's what I expect. Therefore, I support current law enforcement here, and in no way, shape, or form can I sanction defunding the law enforcement." Next speaker is, actually, it's unknown. "I support our law enforcement officers and don't want them to be defunded." The next speaker is Michael Jordan. "I have been a resident of Temecula since 1988. I would like to make it perfectly clear that I support current law enforcement, and I do not want them defunded. When I first heard of this proposal, I was appalled that anyone would even consider this idea with what is happening in other cities that have adopted this reckless plan. Whoever thought that this was a good idea need to strongly reevaluate their thinking process." The next speaker is Trish London. "Please do not defund our devoted, kind, hard-working police who protect us. Please." The next speaker is Greta Abdal. "I support current law enforcement and do not want them defunded. Please read this support for our police at the council meeting of Tuesday, August 25." Next speaker is Deborah Christensen. "It has come to my attention that Temecula is considering defunding the police. Is that true? How can that be true? Lack of enforceable rules and laws lead to chaos and crime. I have already seen the crime and homelessness increase in my beautiful community. I've lived here since 1997, and it has gradually become worse over the last couple of years, with the governor releasing criminals at an alarming rate and the increased disrespect for law enforcement. It only makes their job that much more difficult. Unless you expect to give the right to every Temecula citizen to carry a weapon and protect themselves when at home or away, you simply cannot in good conscience defund or decrease law enforcement personnel or funding. How am I to protect myself? Why am I to let someone take what I've worked for because someone says it's fair? What's fair is to protect the taxpaying citizens of Temecula. Don't cave to policies and irresponsible voices of the few. You must stand up for what you know is correct, honest, and in the best interest of all people. Do the job you were elected to do. Protect and serve the citizens of Temecula, not to implement a policy of political means." Next speaker is Bud Abdal. "I support our current law enforcement and do not want them defunded." Next speaker is Sharon Shannon. "I support current Temecula law enforcement and absolutely do not want them defunded." Next speaker is Walter Kirby. "I have lived in Temecula for 33 of my 39 years. I went to Vail Elementary, K through 5, Temecula Middle School, and graduated from Temecula Valley High School. I have voted every year since I was old enough to vote. I find it appalling that the city council has even contemplated defunding the Riverside County Sheriff's Department and Temecula Police Department. All my years here in Temecula, I have witnessed the professionalism of our law enforcement officers. I do not support any decisions by this council to fund our law enforcement officers. In fact, I support more funding for better training and more officers. Chad Bianco has my full support, and he should have yours as well. What happened to George Floyd was appalling, unnecessary, and unfortunate. A clear sign that something is wrong with our law enforcement training and mindset. In my few years of life, I have learned that when something is broke, you fix it. Fixing something which isn't broken takes time and many. Which is broke, which is broken, takes time and many. So why would you think that defending law enforcement is going to fix anything at all? I hear James Stewart is running for city council again. I look forward to seeing him sitting on the council once again. Mr. Nigari, you have had my vote and always will. You are a patriot, and we need men like you on the council."
I got to tell you, it's really difficult to sit here and listen to this when this was never intended. It's not on the agenda. We've never discussed it. I just want people to know. It's really upsetting to me that people would think this. And I'm going to ask later on, if maybe they'll email us and tell us why they think that. So, I'm sorry. I'm just very frustrated. So, thank you, Madam City Clerk.
That's understandable, Mayor Potem Edwards. I'll go ahead and continue reading, and I know although this item is not on the agenda, as the city attorney had previously indicated, perhaps under city council comments, you may wish to say something in passing. The next speaker is Wayne Christensen. "We support our current law enforcement, and we absolutely do not want them to be defunded." The next speaker is Denise Watson. "My husband and I have lived in our beautiful city since 1992. We both have small businesses and have been involved in small ways through PTA, HOA, church neighbors, helping neighbors to keep our community safe and enjoyable. We have seen the growth and expansion of our city, seen it flourish and become more and more inviting for new residents. We would like to express our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for the love and care past city councils and residents have given to keep our city beautiful and prospering. The main concern we would like to address today is we do not want our police defunded. Anyone with common sense and clear thinking would reject such an idea. This year has been chaotic at best, and our police have done an outstanding job in providing safety, strength, compassion, as we all work together to stand together as Temecula residents and persevere through these attacks from the state governors, from the state governors' overreach and destruction of our businesses and rights. Please do not make any rash decisions. True leaders don't react in emotion. They hear from all sides, research, and come to a decision out of integrity, reasoning, and discussion. Let the city residents have a forum to speak our minds. Let us have time to hear all sides. Let us make an informed decision that will impact our city together. Do not try to sneak any huge changes like this under the cloak of darkness called COVID. Treat us residents with the same respect you would like yourselves." The next speaker is Louis Pontrali. "My wife and I have been proud residents of Temecula since 1994. I am not aware and never have been aware of any problems with the performance or integrity of the Temecula Police Department. I was so disappointed to hear that there is consideration from the Temecula City Council regarding defunding our police department. I was shocked. The first thing I considered was who in their right mind would consider taking away resources from our hard-working city law enforcement, particularly in a time when prisons and jails in California are being emptied in our communities. It just doesn't seem very smart. I understand there may be upcoming issues that relate to the budget, but the law enforcement item is one that, if anything, needs to be increased." The next speaker is Carrie Doyle. "Just letting you know that we do not want our police defunded. I know that we don't have our own police, and the sheriff's department is hired by Temecula, but we need to support our officers in our community." The next speaker is Brad Kraus. "I support current law enforcement and do not want them defunded." Next speaker is Bethany McLean. "Police are essential to our community, and we need them fully funded, especially in these times where people are rioting, looting, burning buildings, blocking roads to pull people out of their cars for murder in the streets. I stand with our men and women, law enforcement officers. Please do not defund our police. It would harm the law-abiding residents of Temecula and the surrounding communities." The next speaker is Gary Smith. "I am in support of the current law enforcement and do not want any defunding." Next speaker is Gina Franklin. "My family has resided in Temecula for nearly 20 years. We have raised four children here. When we first moved here, the city's website had scripture on it. When you remove God, you can guarantee a decline. When you remove police, you will guarantee a decline." The next speaker is Gerald Hofstadter. "Several years ago, my wife and I were looking to relocate to an area removed from the harsh winters of the Midwest. We visited various places and always ended up looking at Temecula, California. The things that we observed in Temecula that were appealing were many: the small-town atmosphere, the dedicated city administration, the development and planning, and the safe environment provided. Please don't allow yourselves to be swayed by a few. Safety and security is one of the most important facets of a successful community. We all are aware that there are good and bad in all walks of life, but the assumption that considering defunding the police would help solve problems is absurd. We have officials in our state releasing thousands of criminals from our jails into our communities. Do any of you think for one minute they have miraculously become model citizens? Crime is on a huge increase, and now we want to consider defunding our police department. We need to support the wonderful men and women of our police department that respond and protect our city. Training and understanding are all things that can and should be worked on, but to think less police presence and more criminals released is a good idea while then we have lost our minds. We just voted in past years to increase our police force. We have crime issues here. As our state continues to change, we need more police presence. Homeless, immigration, human trafficking, released criminals, traffic and law enforcement are just some of the many issues our dedicated police deal with on a daily basis. Please don't try to fix something that isn't broken. Temecula is a beautiful city, and we all need to keep it that way, and defunding the police is the wrong direction to be headed." The next speaker is Sharon Brown. "I have been a resident of South Temecula for six years. My husband is a police officer in Escondido, and I know the amount of proactive work officers do in order for us residents to be able to live peacefully. Stopping crimes before they happen is something we need to appreciate and support. We expect the Temecula City Council will vote to spend our tax dollars on pro-police measures. We do not cut the police budget one bit. Please do not cut the police budget one bit. Please keep it as is or allow for an increase during these harrowing times. We love and support our brave officers who face what most fear." Thank you, and God bless our men and women in uniform. The next speaker is Bob Cal. And this is one of the three items, I believe, that also reference item number nine in passing. "Please support the people of this area and replace the resolution." Actually, this is going to take longer than three minutes, so I'll go ahead and start the timer. "Please support the people of this area and replace the resolution passed on August 18 with the attached resolution which shows Temecula as a very caring and loving community. There is no need to create another commission which diverts more money and time to something that is not needed. Systemic racism does not exist in Temecula or in this area. Case in point, Chuck Washington Black was a longtime councilman of both Marietta and Temecula. Matt Ron is of Middle Eastern descent, as well as Mike Nigari, both longtime councilmen. We only have one white man on the council right now, and I have never even thought about race or gender until this resolution. The resolution passed on the 18th is creating division instead of diversity and inclusion." The proposed resolution for replacement is the City of Temecula Resolution. "The city of Temecula has always been a model of diversity since its inception. A resolution of the city council of the city of Temecula to continue supporting the fair and equal treatment of all human beings by declaring its commitment to the advancement of equity, diversity, and inclusion, all of which have been hallmarks of Temecula since its foundation, is hereby proposed. Whereas for decades, Temecula and its surrounding sphere of influence have abided by the important words founded in the Declaration of Independence, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We, the city council of Temecula, applaud our city and the surrounding areas living up to these core principles in words and in spirit." Now therefore, the city council of the city of Temecula does hereby resolve as follows. "Section 1, the city of Temecula will continue to support and promote the fair and equitable treatment of all human beings in this just society, irrespective of race, ethnicity, gender, disability, religion, or cultural background. And the city will continue to strongly denounce racism, bigotry, and prejudice in all its forms, systemic or otherwise, while also rejecting those harmful identity politics which seek to undermine our American constitutional freedoms and liberties. Section 2, the city of Temecula stands in solidarity with and in service to the Temecula community, as it always has done. Section 3, the city of Temecula recognizes the role it plays in fostering a healthy and prosperous environment for all residents of Temecula and continues to commit to the meaningful advancement of equity, diversity, and inclusion in its community dialogue, services, programs, and policies. Section 4, as the city of Temecula remains in compliance with all aspects of the law pertaining to non-discrimination practices, the city of Temecula therefore serves as a role model for other cities to emulate and to follow. The city of Temecula continues to support and promote its police and first responders, its business community, its local culture and institutions, and its citizens in order to promote a more perfect union of peace, harmony, and prosperity." That's three minutes. The next speaker is Sharice Mangiola. "Hello, I know that you all are working very hard and doing the best job you can in these unprecedented times. Thank you. I feel like your jobs are very important, and we need you, but we also need the police. There are over 100,000 children that go missing in the United States every year. Sometimes, law enforcement is their last line of defense. Most of these children are minorities. I feel it is very discriminating, I think, to not care about these children's and their lives. They matter. They are too small to defend themselves. They need the police to protect them. I understand this is a dilemma for you, but understand that inside the Constitution, there are all the answers you need. This is what the majority of people stand by, and the majority is who will, when not a few, select special interest groups. Please take the time for you to decide who you will align yourselves with." The next speaker is Tamara Burns. "I would like to request that the following statement please be read at the council meeting tomorrow night. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank our law enforcement for keeping Temecula safe. I have lived in Temecula for 15 years, and I'm raising a family in this great city. Amid statements from activists and protesters to defund the police, I wanted to ensure that my voice was heard as well. I fully support law enforcement and value their role in our city. I oppose any defunding of our law enforcement." Next speaker is Steve Schmidt. "As a resident of the community, I fully support the police department and strongly oppose any attempts to defund it in any way. A community without effective law enforcement is a community that does not value law and order. That is not a community in which I would want to live." The next speaker is Mary Pat Wilson. "I support the current law enforcement. I do not want them defended." Next speaker is Melinda Shaw. "I support current law enforcement and do not want them defunded." Next speaker is Letitia Plummer. "I support current law enforcement and do not want them defunded." Next speaker is Tammy Crisp. "Our policemen and women are heroes of our community, and they deserve to be fully supported and fully funded. My children deserve to feel safe and know they will be protected in our community. I stand with our police force in Temecula and do not want them defunded. Defunding our police force would ruin our great city of Temecula. Please do not punish the whole for the senseless acts of the few." Next speaker is Candy Nito. "Very shady to sneak in the defund the current law enforcement at last meeting. Is that the majority feeling in Temecula? I'm thinking not. I do not support the defunding of current law enforcement monies and believe we need law to help order in this town. Please review and reverse this course." The next speaker is Jane Luhan.
It is my.
It's Luhan.
Luhan.
"It is my understanding that there is a push to defund the Temecula Police Department by a certain group that has infiltrated our city with the intention to destroy it if they don't get their way. I support our current police department, and I'm thoroughly against the effort to defund them. Our police department is a vital part of our city structure and needs to stay in place the way it is. In light of the current anti-police attitude that is so pervasive in our country, I find this effort to be not surprising but very offensive, short-sighted, and an affront to those of us who believe in law and order. Criminals and anyone who break our law should be held accountable for their actions. Our country is turning into a society of pathetic citizens who make excuses for bad behavior and then lay the blame on law enforcement when anything goes wrong. This is unacceptable. Holding criminals and others that break our laws accountable is the right thing to do. Please don't allow the good citizens of our city to fall victim to those who would have you believe that law enforcement is our enemy. Those who wish to have our awesome Temecula Police Department defunded are the enemy. I hope that our city council won't fall victim to political correctness and will stand up for what is right. Please don't fall victim to those who use intimidation tactics, threats of violence, etc., to keep you from doing the right thing, which is keeping our police department intact. I have been a Temecula resident for over 20 years, and I'm counting on our Temecula City Council to do the right thing, and that is to keep our city safe by not defunding our awesome police department." The next speaker is Jay Luhan.
Yes, Jane.
The next one is Jay.
Yeah, yeah.
Not Jane, Jay.
Okay, yes.
"Recently, I became aware that segments of our city have asked our city council to consider defunding our police department. Please know that I strongly disagree with this proposal. My first thoughts upon hearing of the defunding notion was a reflection upon our city's incorporation vision. Temecula supports a family-focused lifestyle enjoyed by its residents while promoting a strong local business community in agricultural, technological, and manufacturing industries. Such a vision for our city is dependent upon commonly-understood structure. Defunding our police is literally the antithesis of the fundamental image that we enjoy. We also consider the ambiance of other cities where defunding is an issue of not only discussion but actual action. Which of these defunding cities are admirable examples of what Temecula wishes to emulate? Even more fundamentally, why must Temecula copy anybody? I have been a Temecula resident for more than 20 years. I am proud of our city. Surely, our city has the strength and dignity to withstand the whims of those whose interest is about issues other than the totality of our city. Defunding our police is not problem-solving. Defunding police is catering to a limited agenda. Defunding police sets the wrong decision, and defunding police is wrong for Temecula." The next speaker is Samantha Zek. "I support our current law enforcement and do not want them defunded." The next speaker is Rick Reese, and this is another one that, in passing, mentions the commission. In response, actually, it might be three minutes, so I'll start there. "In response to the council's approval of the item number seven resolution during the August 11 meeting, I would like to reiterate my concerns and dissatisfaction with much of the remaining wording, which leaves a reader with an impression that Temecula somehow needs to grovel and atone for some sort of vague and unsubstantiated history of racism ingrained throughout the city since its incorporation in 1989. Again, I want to reemphasize that our city is a vibrant, diverse, healthy, and inclusive community, and the supporting rationalizations in the item number seven resolution on August 11 suggest that Temecula residents have something to be ashamed of. This is false. I would strongly suggest that the council consider the attached draft replacement resolution to supersede the resolution passed on August 11. It is the same resolution that was submitted by Mr. Cal earlier. This alternate resolution was drafted by a group of us here within the community. Please consider this in regards to the resolution you passed on August 11. Next, I would like to voice my concerns about the creation of the now-approved Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Ready Commission. Agenda number nine dated August 25 provides for stipends for commissioners. I believe it is important that you communicate to the public the amount of each stipend afforded to each commissioner and the frequency of payment to each commissioner. Also, it should be made clear that these payable funds will in no way be diverted from the city's public safety funds and/or funds which are deemed vital and essential to the safe and secure performance of city operations. I also believe that it will be vitally important that the commissioners come from the Temecula community and that they are U.S. citizens. Despite the passage of California Senate Bill 225, it sounds as though cities have some leeway in the standards created for the appointment of commissioners." Lastly, I will emphasize how important it will be that this ready commission not become an entity that is hijacked by politics. Our community cannot afford a commission that is staffed by activists picked from the diversity industrial complex in order to utilize such a commission as blunt political object to compel dissenting people into silence and retreat. We cannot afford to let politics of the day lead us into a dystopian world like Kurt Vonnegut's 1961 short history, Harrison." We cannot afford to let politics of the day lead us into a dystopian world like Kurt Vonnegut's nineteen sixty-one short history Harrison Bergeron, in which equality was achieved by forcing handsome men and beautiful women to wear masks. Intelligent people subjected every twenty seconds to blasted noise into their ears and skilled ballerinas forced to wear heavy weights. I'll leave you all with the opening paragraph in Vonnegut's Twilight Zone-like world. The year was twenty-eighty-one and everybody was finally equal. They weren't only equal before God and the law. They were very, they were equal every which way. Nobody was smarter than anybody else. Nobody was better looking than anybody else. Nobody was stronger or quicker than anybody else. All this equality was due to the two-hundred-and-eleventh, twelfth and two-hundred-and-thirteenth amendments to the constitution. That's three minutes. The next speaker is Christine Fontes. Temecula is a beautiful city, one that is filled with wonderful people, loving, caring and full of life. I have been saddened to hear that there are those who want to condemn this great city. It is not one that is full of hate and racism, but rather one that has been an example to all. I would like you to reconsider the diversity resolution that was passed on August eighteenth. An updated resolution was submitted today by Bob Cowell written by a committee. I agree with this updated resolution and I feel it better represents the views of the community. The second thing I would like to mention is that I, along with everyone I know, support the law enforcement and appreciate their service to the city. You need to defend the police and not defund them. There, they are here for our protection and safety. Any type of reducing the funding of our law enforcement would be detrimental to our community. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice my opinion. The next speaker is anonymous. We support all our law enforcement. We do not want our police budget to decrease or to be adjusted in any way. Let the record show that Marianne Edwards was in support of Measure S to increase police funding and that measure is what keeps our community safe. We are not interested in paying for appointed commissioners for diversity groups. Our entire family grew up in schools here in Temecula and while we were not free of problems, we certainly did not have, nor do we currently have racism issues. Instead of putting our tax dollars towards these commissioner positions that will draw a salary in January, why not use those funded for restoring our fellow small business owners who have lost everything? The next speaker is Joy Wilson. I would like to state that we do support our local police and we do not want them defunded in any way. We also do not support any additions or committees being added to our council. We do not condone violent protesters and those that want to destroy our beautiful city. As the city council, please stand for the traditional family values of this town and protect our beautiful properties. The next speaker is Nancy Spence. I am an avid supporter of our law enforcement who is doing an outstanding job in protecting the public as should. I do not support defunding our law enforcement. It would be idiocracy to do such a thing. You council members were appointed to serve the public which includes providing protection through law enforcement for the safety of the citizens from crimes and violence. If you do not provide this protection to the citizens which you are required to do, you will be held liable in the court of law. It would behoove you to support the community which has appointed you to your position, so please protect our community and support our law enforcement. Next speaker is Suzanne Hines. It is my understanding that there is talk of a local movement to defund our police department. As a longtime resident, I ask for your support for our sheriff's department. Please do not give in to this council culture. Look at what is happening to all the Democrat-run cities that are defunding their police departments. More drugs, crime, looting, riots, homeless encampments. I have lived in Temecula since it was incorporated in nineteen eighty-nine. Temecula has always been one of the safest cities in the country. Our police sheriff's departments is one of the major contributors to its success. Undermining it will only bring trouble. Please do not forget why you were able to get Measure S passed. You told us it was for public safety. If anything, now need more police, not less. The next speaker is Christine O'Neil. First, we strongly support law enforcement. We remind the city council of Measure S that passed by a vote of Temecula citizens and was then adopted unanimously by city council, presided over by Mayor Marianne Edwards in two thousand seventeen. Community surveys and focus groups reveal that same primary goal, public safety and law enforcement. Thank you, Mr. Nagar, for standing up for us once again to remind the council that we are in a safe city and we are in fact one of the safest cities of our size in the United States. This fact also reflects the character of our citizens and the quality of Temecula's law enforcement team. Secondly, we have great concern about Resolution twenty-twenty passed on August eleventh, twenty-twenty and presented us by the National League of Cities. It seems this resolution was not passed merely to start a discussion as mentioned by council members. Rather, it seems the city council is now taking a directly activist position by creating a new committee with various administrative positions which will be occupied with people appointed by the council at their discretion. We as citizens have no voice in the process. We do not appreciate simply being directed without consent that the committee will be formed and those individuals will establish policies that impact how we live, work or conduct business in Temecula. With all due respect, this seems a broad overreach of power and attempt to impose council's moral authority over the citizenry of Temecula. Please table this item for further review. Third, if any person questions our commitment to race, diversity or inclusion, we remind them of our citywide fight against Liberty Quarry which lasted seven years. People of all races, creeds, religions, political affiliations, ages and income levels stood together for a common cause, united. We save Temecula and our outstanding quality of life. Temecula is a diverse, inclusive, safe and beautiful city and there is bounty opportunity for all. The next speaker is Emily Carion. Actually, this was a letter that was submitted by Emily Carion, Mark Bryan, Maureen Adress, Ellen Turek, Anthony Turek, Nicole Lacco, Judy Bernstein, Rebecca Dietrich, Diane Smith, Kim Vaughn, Catherine Frederick, Lynn Breniger, Jeff Nichols, Amanda Lamantia, Patricia Aguirre, Catherine Villagrand, Sean Hagerty, Lee Martin, Marcus Kelly, Yvonne Sturgis, Ruby Ferguson, Patricia Compton, Christine Grenot, Dorothy Steinbeck, Debbie Kirkwood, Chaplain Beverly Ortiz, Pastor Jesse Ortiz, Michael Adress, Marcy Paulson, Janet Kamashda, Megan Ahern, Carol Graham, Arlene Kilmer and William Wilson. We are thirty-four residents of Temecula writing in response to the public's and council members' comments made during the city council meeting on August eleventh, twenty-twenty. During that meeting, council members received public comments on the city's efforts towards racial equity, including a proposed resolution to denounce racism. Two public comments requested that the names of black victims be removed from the resolution. One comment, for instance, claims that Trayvon Martin and Michael Brown were killed as a result of their own criminal actions. There is nothing further from the truth. Trayvon Martin, for example, was unarmed when he was harassed, attacked and killed by George Zimmerman. Zimmerman perceived Martin, a seventeen-year-old teenager returning home from the store as a threat because he was black. We reject the racist narrative provided in the public comment that Martin beat Zimmerman, justifying his murder. While the commenter was correct in stating that George Zimmerman was acquitted, this only illustrates the anti-black racism embedded in our criminal justice system. Before deliberations, jurors were instructed to consider Florida Stand Your Ground law, which meant Zimmerman had no duty to retreat before using deadly force. The fact of the case shows that Zimmerman stalked Martin by car and on foot even after being told by local police that it was not necessary for him to do so and that he should not get out of his car. Imagine being a seventeen-year-old boy returning home from the store, being followed by a man for over seven minutes. It is safe to assume you would feel threatened and scared and that it was necessary to defend yourself. Yet, by virtue of his race, Martin had no right to stand his ground in the eyes of the court and the author of the public comment. On the other hand, Zimmerman was found not guilty despite following Martin, thereby initiating an altercation and killing a teenager. As Zimmerman's acquittal demonstrates, the criminal justice system all too often perpetuates white supremacy and fails to deliver justice for black victims. While we condemn any and all police violence, we also reject the commenter's suggestion that white victims of police violence, just like Justine Dammun be included in this, in the resolutions language. The point of the resolution is to denounce racism and it was motivated by national protests drawing attention to disproportionate police violence perpetrated against black people in the United States. While tragic, Dammun's death cannot be attributed to racism. Moreover, her killer was convicted and justice was served, which cannot be said for the black victims listed in the resolution. The commenter wrote that Dammun was not a criminal in any sense, but neither were the black victims named in the resolution and they too deserve justice. Diversifying the victims listed in the resolution would only serve to detract from the truth that black people are three times more likely to be killed by police than whites and when black people are killed, their families are less likely to seek justice. We commend the Temecula City Council for their efforts so far in addressing racism in our city. Yet while the resolution council members passed on August eleventh denounces racism in all its forms, no council member denounced the blatant racism illustrated in these public comments. We are disappointed in the inaction of the council members who neither corrected these racist claims nor even seemed to find fault with them. Both Mayor Protem, Marianne Edwards and Council Member Mike Nigars said they were unaware of the details of the victims named in the resolution they passed. We hope by providing this, Madam Mayor Protem Edwards, your speaker is on. Would you like to mute?
Sure.
We hope by providing this letter that we have educated the council members on the details of Trayvon Martin's murder, but we also maintain that ignorance is no longer an excuse and that it is council members' duty to know the details of the wrongful deaths of the other black Americans named in the resolution. George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmed Arbery, Stefan Clark, Philando Castile, Tamira Rice, Michael Brown and Eric Garner. Furthermore, for all council members' talk of creating a welcoming space for dialogue around race and racism, no council member thought of countering public comments that made the meeting unwelcoming for Temeculans of color. This suggests that when council members say they want to create a welcoming space, they mean a welcoming space for white Temeculans. While we support everyone's right to submit public comments to be read during city council meetings, council members undermine their own efforts towards racial equity when they allow racist public comments to go unaddressed. We are writing to remind council members that they have a duty to serve Temecula and residents of color and that we will hold them accountable to the resolution they passed denouncing racism in all its forms. If, as the resolution claims, the city council recognizes the role it plays in fostering a healthy, prosperous environment for all residents of Temecula and commits to the meaningful advancement of equity, diversity and inclusion, council members must prove it. They must be courageous in this commitment. They can begin by naming racism when it occurs, including during council meetings. And the record will reflect thirty-four names that submitted that comment. The next comment is Carol Steinorth. I support current law enforcement and do not want them defunded. Please, please read at city council meeting, keep Temecula safe. The next speaker is Christine Royer. Please listen, read this in your meeting Tuesday. I am a female who is home alone a lot. Getting police assistance where I live takes forty-five minutes sometimes. What will happen if police are defunded? Please help to prevent this from happening. Defending police is a terrible idea. The next speaker is Jerry Derry, Geraldine Derry. I support law enforcement and I do not want them defunded. The next speaker is Christine Jones. I'm a resident of the Temecula Valley. I have enjoyed living in a safe and beautiful community here for sixteen years. I support current law enforcement and I do not want them defunded. The next speaker is Suzanne Lane. As public servants, you have taken an oath to uphold the constitution. It is under attack. The constitution doesn't give us our rights. We were born with God-given rights. The constitution was created to make sure the government doesn't take away ours and yours rights, but alarmingly, this is exactly what is happening right before our eyes. The government isn't just taking away our rights. The government is using stores, medical offices, airline schools and businesses to strong-arm us into giving up those rights. Please be uphold, please uphold. I think it's please uphold what you have sworn to uphold, our constitutional rights. That's what you are there for. I think here for is to protect those rights of we the people. Thank you. The next speaker is Stephanie Sforich. As a resident in this community, I am alarmed and disturbed at the thought of this rash act that is a reaction to political pressure more than an actual reaction to need. Temecula Police Department is not listed as guilty in any one of those terrible crimes that have been committed by other agencies. So instead of praising our city government and police for a job well done so far and keep it up, we get an admittance of wrongdoing and acceptance of oversight and control by a non-elected group of people that will wield quite a lot of power on voters and of our police. This is unacceptable. I am totally in support of holding agencies, departments and officers accountable for behavior unethical and illegal, but I am not in favor of handing over oversight and influence to people who are not voted in, especially when our department does not show systemic abuse of systems, citizens or employees based on color, religion, creed, sexual orientation, race, et cetera. I expect the mayor and city council to do their job and monitor the police department or department we are hiring, county sheriff. So far, it seems you have all done a fine job and recent events in our country should make you all feel both proud and mindful. You should all feel proud because it seems you have managed a quality law enforcement department that seems to have been respectful of diversity and laws. You should be mindful that unethical or unlawful actions can happen within a law enforcement. So it is good to keep up the strong oversight and reaffirm to continue great service to our population with an even greater effort, but in no way, shape or form should you reorganize the governance we have with non-elected influences as if you must reform a system that is not broken. It seems to me this is, action is aimed at garnering more votes to remain in office. The objectives of the city government should not be to appease or please people to stay popular so you can get elected, but to do what is effective for our community and manage it well. It is these actions that get you reelected. It is your performance and the results you have provided. So as I see it, as far as policing and equity treatment go, you have done well and should expect to be elected based on your performance. Do not panic or pander because opposition has come in and now you want to juggle and try to appease to appease them to keep your job. It is not necessary. You are doing well. However, by maneuvering to attempt to appease, you are now upsetting the rest of your citizens who voted you in based on your performance and courage to stand on the great job you do. We will not allow opposition to take advantage of this very tragic moment in history. If a department or city has behaved badly, they should answer for it, be accountable and make changes. That is how government works. Why are you so eager to give up the power we gave you as voters to a non-elected commission that will not stop at this? Once your willingness to accept failure has been canonized by tonight's vote, do you really think they will stop? Have, have they stopped in the cities of Seattle, Los Angeles, Chicago? No. Why? Can you not see that it is not supervision that these people want? It is overturning of an entire system. So the next step is to vote you out and replace you with leaders that follow all of their views on an unaffiliated interest of economy, wages, energy and structure of societies. Next speaker is Mark Hines. I request the city council rescind the resolution they passed during the last council meeting and replace it with a positive one and/or suffer being recalled. The City of Temecula has always been a model of diversity since its inception. A resolution a resolution of the city council of the City of Temecula to continue support, supporting the fair and equitable treatment of all human beings by declaring its commitment to the advancement of equity, diversity and inclusion, all of which have been hallmarks of Temecula since its foundation, is hereby proposed. Whereas for decades, Temecula and its surrounding sphere of influence have abided by the important words found in the Declaration of Independence, we hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal and that they are endowed by their creator with certain inalienable rights that among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. We, the City Council of Temecula applaud our city and the surrounding areas living up to these core principles in words and in spirit. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Temecula does hereby resolve as follows. Section one, the City of Temecula will continue to support and promote the fair and equitable treatment of all human beings in this just society irrespective of race, ethnicity, gender, disability, religion or cultural background. And the city will continue to strongly denounce racism, bigotry and prejudice in all its forms, systemic or otherwise, while also rejecting those harmful identity politics which seek to undermine our American constitutional freedoms and liberty. Section two, the City of Temecula stands in solidarity with and in service to the Temecula community as it has always done. Section three, the City of Temecula recognizes the role it plays in fostering a healthy and prosperous environment for all residents of Temecula and continues to commit to the meaningful advancement of equity, diversity and inclusion in its community dialogue, services, programs and policies. Section four, as the City of Temecula remains in compliance with all aspects of the law pertaining to non-discrimination practices, the City of Temecula therefore serves as a role model for other cities to emulate, to follow. The City of Temecula continues to support and promote its police and first responders, its business community, its local culture and institutions and its citizens in order to promote a more perfect union of peace, harmony and prosperity within its sphere of influence. Section five, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon passage and shall supersede the previous resolution passed by the city council on August eleventh, twenty-twenty. Madam Mayor Pro Edwards, and that is the resolution that was proposed by several that were, was reflected in that group in its entirety. So if it comes up again, I won't read it again in its entirety and we'll both look back to the entirety already on the record. The next speaker is Scott Riddle. Get a life, you lowlife. Address the real issue. Black-on-black murders and terrorism spreading in the Democrat-run radical left cities will vote you out. The next speaker is A. Anthony. I have been a resident of Temecula for twenty-seven years and I am very proud of our community. I was beyond disappointed to hear that there is consideration from the Temecula City Council regarding defunding our police department as well as your consensus that there is systemic racism. I have never seen any racism of any kind or issue in our community or with our wonderful police department. You are trying to fix two problems that clearly do not exist. Everyone I know treats everyone with selfless kindness regardless of race or creed. Temecula is a model community and one of the safest in the country. Please don't follow in the footsteps of those who are failing. The next speaker is Chantel Rupel. I am a supporter of our law enforcement and police and would like them to remain fully funded. A desire to have police in the City of Temecula does not define them as racist, but rather caring by providing protection A desire to have police in the city of Temecula does not define them as racist, but rather caring by providing protection for their community. The next speaker is Sandra and Gerald Hofstadter. Temecula City Council, please adopt this resolution instead of the one recently passed on August eighteen, twenty twenty. Um, it is the resolution that I read for the record just a few minutes ago and submitted by Sandra and Gerald Hofstadter as well. The next speaker is Paul Menth. I am writing in support of your decision to approve Temecula's anti-racism resolution. Receive update regarding receive update regarding race and equity initiative efforts adopted. Related resolution provide general direction regarding the same recommendation that the city council receive an update regarding the race and equity initiative efforts and provide general direction regarding the same and adopt a resolution entitled Resolution number twenty twenty fifty-six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Temecula supporting the fair and equal treatment of all human beings, denouncing racism in all its form and declaring its commitment to the advancement of equity, diversity, and inclusion. Adopted amended resolution with addition of a whereas clause to include definitions of diversity, inclusion, equity, and religion in the parentheses subsets and approve general direction on the creation of a commission. Um, for the record, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem Edwards, this is the resolution that was approved two weeks ago by council. The next speaker is Albaia Miller. And Ms. Miller writes, who will we find to sincerely care about what is going on with the preservation of this once rural community? Mr. Stewart, District Four is the lone vote against Alter and seventeen fifty, one thousand seven hundred fifty homes going in the west side of Temecula. If other candidates take a stand to protect a much less polluted and saturated in traffic countryside, then take that stand. As Mr. Ruiz states in his candidate statement, that means any business, any housing tract, any buildings are welcome and permitted by him when Temecula needs absolute oversight as to any more, anything that outcompetes the businesses here. This is not high-density Orange County, Mr. Ruiz. The other county will definitely take plenty of votes from Mr. Stewart, which is how the developer, Mr. Nigar, was reelected. Multiple candidates is for primaries and must also be for primaries for city council. Then the two highest vote registered will be in the runoff. The voting system acts like city council races don't. It matters who your council person because, who is your council person? Because they govern your everyday and ability to obtain groceries, to have public safety, to have repaired roads, to have libraries, fire departments, hospitals. They are critical to your existence. Joe Biden or the other isn't repairing water leaks, holes in the roads, reaching out to neighbors with funds to repair your house. So the city looks well-kept. So we have Mark Gulaf for District Four running and he would please a lot of voters and has multiple friends. He is well-educated and definedly in leadership. However, he hasn't had as many life experiences, didn't lead us through the pandemic, and has no elected government experience. Mr. Stewart will take up the path he already organized, which was keeping a very informative Facebook page for pandemic information, road closures, cal fire protections, small business support. Ms. Perez, District Four, is also a seasoned Temecula citizen, knowing the inequality of certain communities in establishing new businesses and the difficulty of passing the list of ordinances to have a business here. If you can't vote for Stu Stewart, then Ms. Perez is the choice as she cares about agriculture with her business Organic From the Vine. She understands that closing out more fields means more wildlife will enter homes, properties, and farms. She also knows the balance of nature to deal with some of this and to control rodents and then cats. Then cats take care of business. However, coyotes come after them and the circle goes on. We must take care of our natural native fields. Then we have a battle between a supporter of a certain health clinic, Dr. Alicia Wilkins, and a employee of another health clinic, Jessica Black. I think she meant Jessica Alexander. Neither of these people see that their agendas will not have a planet on which to mind their business and provide proper, safe healthcare for families and appropriate facilities if we continue runaway paving. And that's three minutes. The next speaker is Suzanne Saint John. I am proud to say that I have been a citizen of Temecula since it was officially created in nineteen eighty-nine and was a part of that important vote. I started a restaurant in nineteen eighty-eight in Old Town and have been a significant part of the major growth of Temecula from that day on and proudly seeing major changes to our city with the growth of schools, hospitals, parks, city hall, home churches, businesses, and helpful associations to our fellow citizens and so on. We have all experienced hand-in-hand success in all areas along with our ever-helpful and steadfastly faithful police force, city officials, and community volunteers. And as of this date, we are recognized as one of the safest cities in America. We need to keep up the good work and stay on course of success by not denouncing our goals and proven aspirations. It is extremely disappointing to have witnessed the dramatic nonsense committed by our city officials on August eighteen, twenty twenty, whereby they imposed upon the citizenry of Temecula that we are systematically racist by bringing up the racism that is effective in other cities. Are, are we not aware of the destruction of cities in America imposed by BLM and Antifa? Due to their disgust of our lawful police, are we opening the door to invite them in by diminishing the successful efforts of our faithful police in our communities? We definitely are opposed to the insane resolution passed on the eighteenth that creates a commission that will include non-Temeculans, non-voters, non-citizens, and give them rights over our legal residents. Insane. We are all in complete shock, dismay, and disgust at your recent actions against all of Temecula. And thus, we demand that you apologize to the citizens and rescind the resolution and replace it with a positive one or suffer the consequences as our official city council. The next speaker is Craig Weaver. Don't buy into this racist garbage. This resolution is disgraceful. There is nothing inherently racist about our town and particularly our sheriff's department. Law and order is utmost in establishing a good prosperous town, and these deceptive motions are buying into a very radical destructive movement that will destroy our society and county. That is their intent. Don't fall for it. The next speaker is George Rombach, and he does have a passing comment as well um, to the commission. In response to the council's approval of item number seven resolution during the August eleventh, twenty twenty meeting and the finalization of that resolution, I would like to reaffirm my support on the basic resolution and do hereby put my service where my mouth was. Um, according, accordingly, I do hereby volunteer to serve on the Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission. In doing so, I pledge to do all in my power support and promote the city of Temecula in its established fair and equitable treatment of all human beings and to help improve that effort. However, I feel obligated to express my concerns and dissatisfaction over the whereas paragraphs leading up to the resolution itself. It is grossly racist in that it only expresses one side of the issue, which is the opposite of what the resolution is intended to establish. Further, that wording leaves a reader with an impression that the Temecula, that the city of Temecula somehow is the cause of racism in other cities in the country where, when in fact, our city is a vibrant, diverse, healthy, and inclusive community that has been an example that others could not, could have followed. While it is true that we always can improve and we should, the city does not need to grovel or tone for some sort of vaguely alleged and unsubstantiated history of racism imagined throughout the cities since its incorporation nineteen eighty-nine, which is what the wording seems to set forth. I would respectfully submit that the residents of City of Temecula and its city council have nothing to be ashamed of, which is what those words say. I object. A group of citizens of the city of Temecula have drafted an alternative resolution to the one the city council passed on August eleven, twenty twenty, which I believe more fairly represents, presents all sides of the issue, which has been provided with the comments of others. I would strongly suggest that the council consider this replacement resolution to supersede the resolution previously passed. I further believe that ready commissioners come from Temecula community, believe that the ready commissioners come from Temecula community and that they are U.S. citizens, which I believe is a discretion of the city council that is allowed by California Senate Bill two-two-five. Next speaker is Connie Power. I've enjoyed living in Temecula for the past almost twenty years, mostly because of the law and order that is maintained there. Graffiti is covered up instantly, zero tolerance for bad behavior. Safe town to live in and walk the streets. That's what I expect. Therefore, I support current law enforcement here and in no way, shape, or form can I sanction defunding the law enforcement. Next speaker is it's anonymous. Is, this is an urgent matter. I insist on staying anonymous as the details in my message could endanger my family. I am beside myself with the news. I have learned of your decisions regarding our city and racism. I have lived here for half of my life and ha- and have never seen anything racist come out of our city until BLM walked in and began to protest. I would ask you do your due diligence in researching this terrorist group before aligning yourselves with such. Shame on you. I want this portion read at tonight's meeting. Hundred percent support current law enforcement. I do not want them defunded. Our children are being forced to stay home. Some of us are single mothers and have to leave our children home alone while we work. Furthermore, the electricity is turning off and it is over a hundred degrees. I will not allow my daughter to open the windows while I am gone due to the criminal activity that is increasing in the area and the homeless situation. So my daughter is home alone. The electricity is shutting off. She cannot access her online courses and the windows must remain shut for her protection. And you want to begin the process of defunding the police? Are you crazy? Furthermore, the governor is releasing criminals from prison and two in Menifee charged of sexual assault have already cut their ankle bracelets off and local law enforcement are actively looking for them. And you think less Leo's law enforcement officers is the answer? Get real. You will have a much bigger problem on your hands to deal with if you take this action and destroy our city while pandering to a terrorist outfit. Stand up for your citizens and grow a backbone. The next speaker is Dustin Creason. I support the current law enforcement in Temecula and the whole country in fact, and do not want them defunded. Next speaker is Jason and Laura Stava. I heard there is a hearing about defunding police in Temecula and we are a local family. We are one hundred percent against defunding police in our area. Vote no from the Stava family. The next speaker is Kyle Boyer. My name is Kyle Boyer and I have lived in Temecula, formerly known as Ranch of California since nineteen eighty-eight. I'm thirty-eight years old and I have had the unique opportunity to witness the incredible transformation from our small little town to this beautiful city right here before my eyes. I've made childhood friends growing up in Temecula and that all still live here and are all still my very best friends to this day. We all have families and all are very involved in our community and take pride in our neighborhoods. Temecula has a rich history with a strong tradition and family values, which is why I choose to raise my family here, just like my parents chose to do for me. The reason I'm emailing you today for the first time ever is because of all, because all of this is at risk, at risk of completely changing into the exact opposite of what Temecula means to do for so many of us. I have never in my life been so disappointed in the leaders that represent the residents of Temecula, especially the representatives supporting Alicia Wilkins and other extreme liberals, pushing an agenda like defunding our amazing police officers and supporting a violent divisive group like Black Lives Matter. Here in Temecula, our neighbors support one another regardless of skin color. And throughout my thirty-two years living here, I have experienced nothing less. I strongly encourage you to stand up for the people of Temecula that have helped grow our beautiful city into the envy of so many and reject these extreme politically-charged divisive ideals of an engineered movement that is going to do nothing but push residents like myself, my family, and my friends to leave Temecula. Please help us. The next speaker is Adam Cole. I do not support defunding law enforcement. There are an absolutely invaluable, they are an absolutely invaluable necessity to our society. Not only do they give hope and help to the helpless and those in need, they also deter crime just by being around. What happens when there is no law enforcement, law officers around to help, to call, to depend on in a time of need or crisis? What happens when there is no checks and balances in any way? Am I supposed to believe that people are going to self-govern? Or that I can say, hey, no, 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 don't do that, please, and they will stop? In short, defunding law enforcement is not only laughable, it's absurd and lunatic. Sell crazy someplace else. Next speaker is Kenneth Danko. I was told to email regarding stop signs in Old Town to Temecula. There is concern about the speed of the cars exiting Old Town from the third and front stop sign. A couple Saturdays back, a car did push the barrier into one of the customer's chairs while she was seated. The cars and motorcycles do accelerate quickly from the stop sign and is a potential hazard. Motorcycles do rev their engines next to our guests that are eating outside. This is not a new issue, but has been happening since we opened five years ago. A stop sign even temporary at the second and front intersection should eliminate the issue of the cars speeding out of Old Town. Also, this would benefit customers leaving the parking lot on second behind Stampede. And the last res- and the last um, comment is from Lloyd Mize. City of Temecula City Council, regarding your resolution passed on the eighteenth, it is wrong and an outrage. Enough is enough. Shame on you for telling me and our Temecula citizens that we are suffering from systemic racism. You are creating large division and creating anger and hate within our community. I am a Temecula businessman committed to making our Temecula a great community. What handbook are you operating from? Stop. This is the resolution that we as a community of citizens demand you adopt. As like-minded people in Temecula, we are sixty thousand plus strong and will not put up with your misguided ways. We are committed to having every one of you recalled. Shameful. We are demanding you not asking nicely, suggesting, but demanding you to adopt this resolution. And then it is the identical same resolution as was previously read for the article, uh, for the record. And Madam Mayor, Pro Tem Edwards, that concludes uh, non-agendized items.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right, then let's go on to council comments. Mike, I see your hand go up very quickly.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Okay? All right, and I'll, I'll make it uh, quick. We had so many um, comments on a few topics that I think it, it, it bears responding to and not just moving on in the meeting. Mayor Pro Tem, um, I don't think uh, I could add anything to your comments as it related to, there's nothing on the agenda that has to do with defunding the police. That's never been considered. And um, frankly, uh, I just don't think it will be considered, but um, in any event, it's not on this agenda. Um, regarding the resolution that was passed um, at the last meeting, I think I'd like to clear up a couple of things and maybe just set a s- tiny bit of background. And Mr. City Attorney, I'll stay within a, a, a reasonable comment period, um, because I know this is not on the agenda. About eleven years ago, back in two thousand nine, this city embarked on an effort of inclusion, uh, specifically as it related to those with disabilities, um, autism, Down Syndrome, et cetera. And we've made national news because of it. And the things that we have done are phenomenal. Um, I realize that maybe most citizens may not be aware of that. Many might be. Um, but uh, many may not be just because you may not travel in. When we passed the resolution, uh, the last meeting and the names were mentioned in the preamble, the city did not take any position whatsoever in relation to those cases, the facts, guilty, not guilty, um, what was right, what was wrong. We simply made the statement that those events have spurred the discussion. And that's exactly where we land today. And because we had, I'm gonna guess, almost two hours worth of discussion on the topic. This is where I'll finish on this particular uh, item. The city council was very careful to impose definitions about what race, di- uh, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion meant. And I'm just wanna read it because I get the impression that, that maybe people miss this definition. It's easy to miss. And maybe there's a wrong impression of what we're trying to do and we'll discuss the commission that we're talking about forming later. But quickly, it's in the last whereas. Whereas for purposes of common understanding, diversity means the commitment to the presence of variety which expressed in a myriad of forms. Parentheses, race, ethnicity, ethnicity, you got it. Gender, culture, age, disability, religion, perspective, et cetera, close parentheses. Inclusion means the commitment to create an environment and a condition where those differences are welcome. Different perspectives are heard and everyone has a sense of belonging. And equity means the commitment to work on policies that may directly or indirectly discriminate on a variety of factors, parentheses, race, age, socioeconomics, religion, et cetera, close parentheses. And lastly, and to provide an opportunity for all persons to succeed based on what their needs are to achieve that success. I do not want any resident in this town to feel ashamed um, that the city is taking this on. We have a great track record of doing so, and if things are done correctly, this will be a model for other people to follow. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else? Matt?
Thank you. Hey, um, you know, I, I just wanted to start by uh, saying how proud I am of our city, uh, this, uh, our, our staff and uh, in this city council. Mike, uh, you, you summed up the resolution very articulately and, and thank you for that. Um, because there was a uh, a spirit behind what we uh, what we did and what we're going to continue doing. Um, and it's a very positive one, and it shouldn't be lost in tonight's messaging uh, or public comments. comments because that was never the intent. I am however disappointed here tonight. Let me be just a hundred percent abundantly clear and echo again what Mayor Protem Edwards said earlier. There's never been discussion on defunding public safety. This is simply untrue. Nowhere within my comments, communications or dealings with law enforcement, our sheriff, our staff, has this ever been discussed, period, right? Cannot be more clear about that. Furthermore, as long as I'm on the city council, and I know my colleagues would all agree, public safety remains our number one priority without question. It's the foundation on which this city was created. And we are all continuing to work, whether we advocated for Measure S, whether we've opened up new fire stations or hired new law enforcement personnel. We have always invested in that to make sure that our quality of life is the highest that we can provide. And any suggestion otherwise is simply false. Now, I understand that the rumor mill was once again spreading misinformation or, I mean, let's call it what it is, it was simply a blatant lie. At a time when we need to come together as a community, as a state, as a nation, now more than ever than any time in my lifetime, we have folks like, like Bob Cowell confusingly and actively working to undermine our city, spreading factually incorrect information on platforms like Facebook and in public comment here tonight. And you know, this is actually pretty simple to fix. Mr. Cowell, I know we've talked in the past, so maybe you've lost my phone number, shoot me an email and I'll send it to you again. But have you, have you bothered to contact me? Perhaps we could have had a simple and very decent conversation. Perhaps you wouldn't have confusingly and incorrectly asserted that I'm of Middle Eastern descent. And, and since you brought up race, it's important to note that the issue that you and others seem to be so concerned about has obvious roots deeply embedded in race, equity, diversity and, and inclusion. And during your comments, you created a false narrative about my own ethnicity. Ironically, what you did is just make the point that we were all trying to make here on city council in the first place, which is how important it is to have fair and balanced discussions within our community and why we should be thoughtful about how we speak to one another and apply our perceptions of race and ethnicity. I'm simply not sure what to chalk all of this up to. I'd like to think it's just a misunderstanding or a mistake. I'd like to think that what, what, you know, a lot of the comments and things were surrounding, you know, came from, from somewhere that I just simply don't understand. Or maybe it was just, you know, a painful lack of due diligence. Either way, my door is always open and I know my colleagues are the same. I've always been ready to have a robust conversation about your concerns, helping to ally some of the misconceptions or misunderstandings that might be out there. And I could have answered any questions that you had about public safety or law enforcement or, you know, defunding or any of those concerns. And I would have even been happy to answer questions about my own ethnicity, not that it should matter. Regardless of the reasons for why we, you know, you know, we're, we're, you know, part of this public comment here this evening, this was just simply inexcusable and reckless and our community deserves better. And I thank my colleagues for indulging me there for a moment while I expressed my, my concerns.
Thank you, Matt. Zach?
Yeah, thanks for that, Matt. I really appreciate that and Mike as well. And I'm looking forward to your comments as well, Mary Ann. I'm going to start on a little different note because we started school last week and we quickly realized how difficult this transition is for, for many families in our community. So in speaking with Councilmember Ron, we discussed ways for us to try to support, to make the families during this new school year. I'm now the current rep for WR Cog. And at our last meeting, Dr. Judy White was speaking about some of the challenges that families are facing and the digital divide is one of them. The idea of Wi-Fi gardens was, was tossed out. And this is an idea where we would plant Wi-Fi hubs in our community spaces, in our parks and in our open spaces. It could really help assist struggling families with internet access. We'd also like to explore the idea of possibly programming enrichment activities to support parents and students during this difficult time. Several retired teachers and residents have reached out. They've expressed interest in tutoring and/or mentoring local students on a one-on-one outdoor environment. We could explore the idea of allowing this activity in our parks and open spaces, much like the outdoor fitness activities that we currently are, are working on. Both Councilmember Ron and I feel like there's some opportunities worth exploring. Perhaps we could coordinate with TVSD on some of this on a volunteer basis. There's already a number of cities that are, and school districts that are working on this in this space. And, and in the past, we've had great success with enrichment opportunities at Margarita Community Park and I envision this to be no different. We just really appreciate looking into this and maybe bring it back to that subcommittee. I think there's some, some moves we can make here. And with that, I'm going to roll into some of the public comments that I need to address as well. I'll start with this quote and it, it's been attributed to Mark Twain, but I don't believe it originated with him. And it says, "A lie can travel halfway around the world while the truth is putting on its shoes." And I have to admit, I'm extremely disappointed in some of the comments that I heard tonight. For starters, not once have we ever discussed defunding the police. In fact, we add support to our police with additional resources and our first responders all the way around. I mean, that's just who we are and that's what we do. So I don't know where those comments are coming from, but it's entirely false. In fact, even last meeting, Chief Crater was showing the new, some of the new tech that they were getting on their fire engine. So it's like we're constantly innovating and adding our resources to our first responders. And then secondly, we're not blaming anyone in Temecula for racism. We're just acknowledging that systemic racism exists. That's it. We're just acknowledging that it's exist. Don't take this personally, this isn't, we're not calling anyone out. And then finally, we've been listening, the community's been speaking for, for several months now. This resolution and this commission is something we're hoping to be able to provide a space so that all Temecula residents and their voices can be heard. It's as simple as that. People want to be heard and we're going to listen to them. Thank you.
Unmute, it's the most common phrase we're going to hear in two thousand twenty. I would like to add to what Zach just said by saying the commission is advisory in nature. It has no authority to make any decisions, enact anything that is binding. They serve at the will of the city council and they're going to do things like review our policies and procedures to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak freely or address the city council, you know, things like our visitation policies. It's going to be really fundamental things like that to make sure that the city is doing everything it can to make sure others are heard and included. And again, it's an advisory committee. The city council has the final say and approval for everything. It's, it's really no different than the other commissions. And it will be doing the work as outlined in the charter that we established for that commission. So, you know, I'd like to lay your fears for that. I apologize for any of my emotional outbursts during the reading of the letters. I'm, this is probably one of the most painful things that I have experienced on the council and I've experienced a lot. I've been called names and, you know, have signs put up about me and had ugly pictures of me and, but I have loved and supported and spoken on behalf of our police for the last thirty years as a Temecula resident. I know their families, I have sung at funerals for family members, I have baked things to be sold to raise funds. You know, we give recognition, we support them, we hired ten new officers all at once in two thousand sixteen, thanks to Measure S. And boy, it's making a huge difference, especially our four hot officers, the homeless outreach team in Old Town. Our homeless numbers are down tremendously because of the great work that those officers do in assisting and finding places for those people to stay and to be rehabilitated. But we've never talked about defunding the police. I wouldn't, I would not, I'd be the first one out marching with a picket sign if that were being seriously considered. I mean, we've never thought of it. We honor our police. It's just stupidity in today's environment to think that by defunding those that keep you safe, you're going to be safer or better off? It's ludicrous. You know, Temecula has always put public safety first. We will always, as long as I'm here, we will always put public safety first. My colleagues agree. I would like to know how this got started. And if, I've got names of my friends, people, I, you know who you are. You know, I've known some of you for thirty years. And how you could think I would do something like that is really painful. You know, I'm, I'm glad you spoke up because at least now I know that, that, you know, you were concerned, but nothing could be farther from the truth as far as I'm concerned. And I think my colleagues expressed the same thing. So please tell me, we've gotten, well, you saw seventy-two emails just then and we, we got emails written to us that weren't requested to be part of the public record, so it's even more than that. How did this happen? Please think back. Where did you hear something? Did you read something on social media? You know, how did you come to this conclusion that the council was going to defund the police when we've never talked about it? I wouldn't, I would not support it vehemently against it. And I'd like to hear from a few of you. Tell me how this happened and what caused you to believe something that is so totally inaccurate? And I know it's really easy if you have friends calling and, and they're adamant and hey, if, if I heard this, I would be really upset too as a resident and I probably would have done the same thing. But I think I would have, you know, called City Hall and tried to get more information. And had I done that or maybe watched the last council meeting or something, I would have seen that that was not the case. But I would really like to know how this happened and can we trace it back? Is, you know, are, are people intentionally? We know that social media is a horrible place and we know that people intentionally post things on there just to sit back and watch the fireworks. Now that's their entertainment and I think it's kind of sick. So I would like to know, how were you so convinced that we were going to do this when it was never mentioned? It was never part of our thinking or anything. So go ahead and email me, I mean, Letitia, Lloyd, Jane, Jay, a bunch of other people who are my friends and tell me how this came about. The thing that upsets me the most is we can't unring this bell. You know, we can talk from the desk like we are now, we can talk, when we run into people at the store, I do it all the time, I love, you know, living here, I love running into my neighbors and residents. But we will never be able to reach all the people who sent those emails today. Now I've responded to a lot of them and I'm going to respond to every single one of the seventy-two. But there are people out there now who believe that we are, I'm not even going to say it out loud, believe that we are going to undertake that horrendous act, which we are not. How do we unring that bell? They've, I don't want them to lose confidence in their council, I don't want them to lose confidence in the city that we all love and cherish and protect with everything we have. Our quality of life is second to none. I mean, you know, we all defend that, we all love that. And the police are the biggest part of that. So I don't know how we can unring this bell. I think that's what has me the most upset. So please tell all your friends, it's not true. I don't know how it started. And if you can give me a hint of how you found out, I would love to know how this happens. And, you know, maybe next time, like Matt said, just call me or email me first and I'd be glad to talk to you. So to set you straight. And hey, you know, if you're talking about something that's true, I'll be the first one to say something's true. But this was horrific. I think we all will own to our decisions, you know, we will stand up for the decisions that we make. But we can't defend something when it's not true. So I think that's enough said, but this, this was really painful for me, you guys. I love you all, I love Temecula so much. That's all I'm going to say. So, so thank you, everyone. Okay, get a grip. So we're going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive the reading of standard ordinances and resolution. Number two, approve action minutes of August the eleventh, two thousand twenty. Number three, approve the list of demands. Number four, approve city treasurer's report as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Number five, receive report regarding upcoming vacancies and extend terms of board and commission members to align with the fiscal or calendar year service. Number six, establish always stop control at the intersection of Harvest and Drive and Mendocino Lane slash Fairmont Place. And that is the last one. Anybody want to pull anything or if not, I just need a motion to approve.
Move consent.
Okay. Motion is second. So Madam City Clerk, could you, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mayor Protem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigard?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Shwank?
Aye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. I am going to recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meeting of the Temecula Community Service District, the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the Temecula Housing Authority and/or the Temecula Public Financing Authority. So take it away, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'd like to call the tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, may we please have the roll call?
Yes. Director Edwards, your director Nigard?
You're here.
Director Ron?
I'm here.
And President Shwank?
And I'm here. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Great, thank you. I'll go ahead and dispense with the reading of the rules and I'll move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action. Item number seven, approve action minutes of August eleventh, two thousand twenty. Entertainer motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, any seconds?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigard?
Mike, you're muted, but I know she barked you down for an eye.
I thought I was not, I said aye.
Director Ron?
Aye.
President Shwank?
Aye.
Thank you very much, that passes for real. Do we have a director's report this evening, Director Hawkins?
Mr. President, Commission Chair Levine has a couple of exciting updates later, so nothing from me tonight.
Great, thank you very much. General Matters Report?
I think tonight, Mr. President.
Thanks, sir. Any Board of Directors' reports? I think, all right, I'll just really quickly, last week, the senior center did our first ever drive-through farmer's market. I'd really encourage everyone to check that out next time we do it. It was really cool from, from growing the produce there in the garden and making soup and salsa and then, and then delivering it to seniors. Director Hawkins, your staff over there, they're doing a fantastic job and, and really supporting our seniors. So I appreciate that and I know the rest of the council does as well. So thank you. All right. All right, that's it. I will go ahead and adjourn.
Thank you, Zach. And so we have no successor agency, we have no Temecula Housing Authority, no meeting, Temecula Public Finance, no. And so I'm going to reconvene at Temecula City Council meeting and on to council business. Item number eight, introduce ordinance amending section ten dot, ten point twenty-four point zero four zero, the municipal code regarding bicycles and sidewalks. So do we have a staff report, please? Bicycles and sidewalks, I wonder where this one came from?
Yes, we do have a staff report, Madam Mayor Protem. Good evening, Madam Mayor Protem Edwards and councilmembers. I'll be presenting to you the ordinance that will revise the city's municipal code to allow riding bicycles on sidewalks. And I have a PowerPoint presentation here for you. So the background behind this item is a request that the Trails and Open Space Subcommittee made of staff, what, what seems like only a few months ago, but was actually in late two thousand nineteen, to consider the language in the city's municipal code regarding riding bicycles on sidewalks. And currently, the municipal code does not allow riding bicycles on sidewalks unless it is specifically permitted by resolution of the council and proper signage installed. And the request was to consider basically the reverse of this and to and to allow riding bicycles on sidewalks unless it would be restricted in certain areas. In researching this, staff reviewed the California Municipal Code, excuse me, the California Vehicle Code, to, to, to cover the riding of bicycles on sidewalks. And the vehicle code doesn't specifically prohibit or allow riding bicycles on sidewalks, and leaves it up to the local agencies to address this issue. So staff researched other cities to find what other cities allow or prohibit, and basically found mixed results. Some prohibit the bicycles on sidewalks similar to our current ordinance. Some allow, and some allow with certain restrictions. So with that, staff prepared a draft ordinance to revise the municipal code based on some of the examples we found from other cities to allow the riding of bicycles on sidewalks, but with restrictions that would address safety issues. That ordinance was presented to the Public Traffic Safety Commission in July, and the commission recommended approval of the ordinance. However, they also added or requested that a restriction be put in to, to require riding bicycles in the direction of vehicle, vehicular traffic on the road. And that was added to the draft ordinance that you'll see here in just a moment. So currently, the, these, these are the sections in the municipal code that address bicycles on sidewalks. The first is section ten twenty-four oh three oh, which addresses any vehicles on sidewalks and doesn't allow the riding of any vehicles on sidewalks, including bicycles, unless it is addressed in some other section of the code. We're not proposing to change that section of the, of the code because we do not want other vehicles other than bicycles to be allowed on sidewalks. The next section, ten twenty-four oh four oh, is the section that specifically addresses bicycles on sidewalks. And as I mentioned earlier, this section does not permit bicycles on sidewalks currently unless it's specifically approved by resolution of the council and proper signage in place. And this is the section of the code that we are proposing be revised. So the proposed ordinance and revisions to the municipal code are on the screen now before you. And again, this would replace section ten twenty-four oh four oh with the language you see. What is included here is that it allows riding bicycles on sidewalks with certain exceptions. And those exceptions include the riding of bicycles in business districts, on sidewalks of bridges or pedestrian underpasses, and on sidewalks adjacent to any school buildings. Reason for these restrictions or revisions is these are the areas where there would be potentially higher pedestrian activity and potentially more conflicts with the bicycles on the sidewalks. The next section, as you can see, also addresses bicycles. If there are areas specifically where we would suggest prohibiting bicycles on sidewalks, that can be approved by the count, by a resolution of the city council and posting of signs. So again, it would be the reverse of the current code, and it would allow bicycles on sidewalks in most instances unless it was prohibited by a resolution of the council. The next section addresses the riding of bicycles in the direction of vehicular ta, travel, as well as bicycle riders being required to give the right-of-way to a pedestrian on a sidewalk. So if a bicycle rider encounters a pedestrian on a sidewalk, they would be required to provide proper notification and allow that pedestrian to have, have the right-of-way essentially. So those are the restrictions that, that would be put in place, otherwise allowing bicycles on sidewalks in most other instances. And the last few section here just deal with definition of a bicycle and a sidewalk in the city. So with that, staff proposes to adopt the ordinance that would allow riding of bicycles on sidewalks. And that concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions? Jack, you have to have a question.
Yeah.
You're the bicycler.
Yeah, one quick question, Pat. And, and, and I think we did touch on this in the subcommittee. Is the, is the direction of the sidewalk, and often we have some of our trails will put you out onto a sidewalk, which is really the impetus for bringing this forward, is the trail system connects to many of our sidewalks. And, and then sort of, if, if we go where you're only allowed to ride in the direction of traffic, that sort of would hinder that a little bit, in my opinion. Is there some flexibility there that, that we could sort of, we could go, okay, as long as you're riding with due care, and you're, you know, you're, you're doing that audible, that you're allowed to do that? Because given the nature of the development and a lot of the arterials that we have, some, there's some intersections that don't have crossings on that size. They'd have to ride in that opposite direction to be able to get to that next street. So that's just my, my general concern, and if there's flexibility in that, I'm just curious if there is.
Well, the, the way the ordinance is drafted, it, it would require that the bicycles be ridden in the direction of, of traffic. One of the reasons for that is the, I call the narrowness of, of the sidewalks in, in many cases, and, and just the possibility of, of both a pedestrian and a bicycle crossing one another and, and just attempting to, to keep pedestrians only thinking of bicycles coming in the direction of travel. If the council were to desire to, to add some flexibility, we could certainly revise the language. The other, the other thought is with the, the writing in, in just the direction of travel, if you were going the opposite direction, you would then be just needing to be on the other side of the street, on the sidewalk. So that's kind of the other rationale behind that, that restriction.
Okay.
Are you good, Zach?
Yeah, no, I'm good. I mean, I think, I think the, the, the problem for me is like when we talk about just getting to the other side of the sidewalk, oftentimes that's Ranch of California Road, right? Like T-Drive is the perfect example for me, right? If you want to get to the trail on the other side, on the south side of Ranch of California Road, getting there can provide, it can be difficult, right? So you have to ride on the sidewalk typically in the opposite direction of traffic to get to Meadows. And, and these are, that's just one example. So, you know, I, I think honestly, I think, you know, and I understand the, the position of, of, you know, wanting to keep pedestrians, you know, in mind. And, and certainly, this isn't, I don't want anyone confused, this isn't going to be like road cyclists and groups of people. We're talking about families and children riding their bikes. This is, isn't going to be, you know, people going thirty miles an hour down the sidewalk. This is providing a safe space for kids that, and families that don't want to ride on the, an arterial, is essentially what we're trying to accomplish here. So I'd like to see some flexibility, but I understand if my council colleagues don't want to go that way. I, I, I appreciate the work that went into this because I do think it'll, it'll help keep our families safer.
Zach, let me ask you a question because I'm not a, you know, I know how to ride a bike, obviously, but I'm not a cyclist. So when you say flexibility, I mean, it would have to be, it would have to be consistent, you know? I mean, what, how would you, how would, would we do signage? How would that work, actually?
Well, I think, I don't, I would have to, Pat would have to talk about the signage. But I don't, I think the way that it's written now is we wouldn't have to put signage. It would just be legal. And essentially, what this is doing is taking the onus off of the person riding the bike. And, and if they are riding on a sidewalk, and this has actually happened, this happened in our neighborhood in Harvest, and this has happened on, on Meadows Parkway, where someone's riding on the sidewalk and they ride out into the street, and there's a collision, they're immediately at fault because what they're doing is illegal. So riding on the sidewalk is illegal. So they're just immediately at fault. So the idea behind this was to just create flexibility, that if a child is riding their bike to middle school, and they're riding on, let's say, on the, the west side of Meadows Parkway because TMS is on that side of the road, they're going, you know, against the flow of traffic, that they're not inherently like breaking the law and that they would be protected with, by the law. And, and, and hopefully, they, they would be safe as well. So that was really just the goal of it.
Okay. Yeah, I understand now. Thanks. So.
Madam, Madam Mayor Protem, there was also another major consideration on that from the commission, if you'd like.
Oh, yeah. So what was that?
The main consideration was is that vehicles making right turns and bicycles going in the opposite way of direction moving quickly would likely not be seen in, in Old Town and other areas. There'd be an increased risk of pedestrian versus auto.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's true. I understand that. So, well, it sounds like it was very well thought out. And good job, Pat, well executed. So do we want to have any discussion? Thoughts?
Are there any public comments?
Yeah. Oh, yes, public comments? No, no, no public comments on this one.
Madam Mayor Protem, I would move that the city attorney introduce the ordinance.
Okay. And second?
A second.
Okay. Thanks, Zach.
Okay, I'll read the title. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula amending section ten point two four point zero four zero of the municipal code regarding bicycles on sidewalks.
All right.
And I'll now go ahead and do the, the roll call vote.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Shwank?
Aye.
All right. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So we'll move on to item number nine, adopt resolution establishing the race equity, diversity, and inclusion, R E D I, commission. So could I have a staff report, please?
Yes. And I'm going to go ahead and our fabulous I-team, I T-team will go ahead and put up a PowerPoint presentation as well. Thank you, Jonathan Hall and Chris. So Madam Mayor Protem Edwards, as background, on July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, the city council approved a race and equity initiative for the city of Temecula. The initiative was based broadly on the Race Equity and Leadership Real Program offered through the National League of Cities. As a part of the work plan, the city council conceptually approved items in three phases related to ongoing education, communication, policy review, resolution adoption, and the creation of a commission. On August eleventh, two thousand and twenty, the city council adopted the broader initiative resolution and gave staff general direction on their preferences for a commission. The general direction included the city council's thoughts on the name of the commission, the number of members, the terms, the meeting frequency, appointment process, role, and purpose. The item before the city council tonight reflects that, that particular general direction that you provided staff and formalizes that direction into a resolution officially creating the race equity, diversity, and inclusion, or what we're referring to as the ready commission. So with that, and the commission itself is actually being established pursuant to Temecula Municipal Code, section two point four zero point zero one zero, which provides that the city council has the ability to create advisory bodies as needed, as they deem appropriate. With respect to composition, the city council provided direction that the said advisory commission should be seven members appointed by the city council. They shall be Temecula residents. There will be no officers or employees of the city, no person under employment contract within the city. That particular portion actually comes from the Temecula Code itself and is similar to the composition of our other commissions as well. With respection, with respect to the terms, the, the commission will have three-year staggered terms, similar to the other three commissions and the board. All seven members will be selected at once. Three members will be appointed for terms of three years. Two members will be appointed for terms of two years. And two members will be appointed for a term of one year. And all those terms will be based on a randomized drawing. With respect to the appointment and process and the timing, the appointment process, removal, and the filling of vacancies is all outlined in our Temecula Municipal Code. And in two thousand and nineteen, the city council actually adopted a resolution for the board committee and commission appointment process as well. And all of these appointments, removals, and vacancies that are filled are done pursuant to that. On August, the, the potential timing here is today, and the city council would go ahead and adopt the resolution establishing the commission. And the, our process via resolution actually says we have a sixty-day application and recruitment period. So in September and October, that recruitment period would occur. The applications will be available online. And it is a completely electronic process. And then in November is when the city council would review the applications, hold the public interviews, and publicly appoint, just as we have done in the past year with other vacancies on commissions. These individuals would go ahead and serve a calendar year term as all of our boards, committees, and commissions now operate on either a fiscal year or a calendar year. This particular recruitment would actually be consistent with some upcoming vacancies that we have on the Planning Commission, Public Traffic Safety Commission, Community Services Commission, and the Old Town Local Review Board. With respect to meeting stipend and staff assistance, actually, a lot of this, other than the meeting time, is also set forth in our municipal code, and that's why it is equally applied to all commissions. The, the meeting schedule is proposed to be once regularly on the second Thursday of each month at six P M. in council chambers. As you know, our Public Traffic Safety Commission also meets monthly, as does our Community Services Commission. And then the stipend would be a hundred dollars per meeting, per the Temecula Municipal Code, which is the same stipend as other boards and commissions receive. And then the assistance would also be the same, typically similar to other boards and commissions. They, this particular commission would have a single department liaison and a support staff for the, for conducting the, the meetings. So it would all be consistent with the other commissions. With respect to the role, as emphasized not only earlier in this meeting, but also in the meeting prior, this particular commission, just like our other commissions, with the exception of the Planning Commission, which actually has a few statutory responsibilities, this commission will be advisory in nature. The legislative authority remains with the city council per the government code. Consider, and this particular, the role would also be that they would consider various items within their jurisdiction, including items that are suggested by the council and the city manager, and make recommendations in their advisory nature. Again, there are items that, similar to our other commissions, that we bring forward based on council, city manager, and or director level review that we wish the commission to review. This particular commission would work through and work with and through the department liaison on reports and recommendations, including the annual report to council, just like our other commissions do currently. With respect to the commission's purpose, these six bullet points were outlined, and, and general direction was given by the city council at the last meeting as well, but I think it bears repeating tonight as well. The first bullet point states that this commission's purpose is to build strong relationships around issues of diversity, inclusion, and equity with the city council, other commissions, staff, and the community. This particular commission will learn about existing city events, services, and programs, and help identify opportunities for further diversity and inclusion in these existing event services and programs. They'll also serve as ambassadors to educate the community about opportunities related to diversity and inclusion within the city's event services and programs. They'll go ahead and identify opportunities for enhanced communication with all residents, including those of various race, ethnic, gender, disability, religious, and or cultural backgrounds. They'll go ahead and identify opportunities for improved outreach to all residents on various city efforts and initiatives. As mentioned previously, the housing element came to mind, redistricting comes to mind. And they'll go ahead and evaluate any policies that are brought to the commission for consideration with an equity lens as well, and make recommendations to the city council. So with that, Mayor Protem Edwards and members of the city council, we are happy to answer any questions. And ultimately, the, the recommendation is to go ahead and adopt the resolution establishing the race equity, diversity, and inclusion already commission, and or provide any other direction as you deem appropriate. That concludes staff's report. Madam, Mayor Protem Edwards?
You're on mute. Did you call on me?
Madam Mayor Protem, you're on, you're on mute.
Okay. Just, I have some comments, but right now, just some, some questions. When we adapted this on the twenty-fifth, we spent a lot of time on it. And, and, and we really, you know, we really defined what we wanted this to be, and I think you reiterated it very well, Ms. Madam City Clerk. One thing that I, I did bring up, and it seems to be a common refrain, refrain in some of the comments that came up tonight, was the purpose. And I think that you've covered the purpose very well. But I do want to ask the city manager a question regarding the parameters. And I brought this up in relation to, if you remember last meeting, about the commission being able to put things on their own agenda, and, on their agenda. about the commission being able to put things on their own agenda and on their agenda, and the ability for that to, um, quickly devolve into it becoming political. I wanted to ask the city manager, Aaron, how do you see that working? And how, since it's going to be under your purview, how do you envision keeping this commission on track, or this advisory commission on track? Well, how do you envision that, Aaron?
I, I think, I don't think it's much different than the way we're managing and supporting the Planning Commission, Traffic Commission, Old Town Local Review Board, or the Community Services Commission for that matter. So we, we give the commissioners broad authority to agendize things. I don't recommend censoring anyone from bringing things forward. They work closely with the department head, with staff. And, and oftentimes, staff is the one bringing things forward, not the other way around. So I, but it is reciprocal. So this new commission, just like these others, would have opportunities to, to ask that something be placed on the agenda. They don't necessarily need my permission or my office's permission, or the City Council's permission, because they're, they're doing the work and the charge that we're laying out here today. And then, and then where those items go from there, they may be required to spill off into another commission for further discussion. And I can envision ideas around cultural events coming before the Ready Commission, but the, the special events are housed in Community Services. So it'd really be appropriate to have the Community Service Commission also sort of weigh in on some of these new ideas or new concepts. And if there's an expenditure related to that, this might get kicked up to the City Council, or it may stop at that level. So I'm, I'm envisioning, you know, a lot of latitude given for the, the, these seven individuals. And I, I also envision for the first several months that it'll be critically important, and I mentioned this in previous meetings, that every member of the executive team is in front of them, sharing and talking about what we do as a city. What do we do as an operating department? What do our divisions do? What are they responsible for? And let them ask questions and get really indoctrinated into how we run a city and, and what we're responsible for. And I think equipping this new commission early on is going to be incredibly important for them to decide how they can make things good, even better, or ask questions about why things are getting done, or introduce new things for us to bring forward. So Councilman Nigar, I, I hope I answered your question. I, I, I see a lot of latitude and flexibility, staff support, and then sort of a two-way exchange of agenda items, just like we've modeled with, over the years, with these other boards and commissions.
You know, Mr. City Manager, you, you did, and I, I do have a follow-up, and just like last, last meeting, you know, I don't want to overrun the horse here and, and have him get beaten till he's dead, but is, I, I just want to know that the boundaries are, are defined, and I'll tell you what I mean by that. And, and I don't, I don't want censorship either, no more than we'd want a planning commission or any of our commissions being told how to think or what to do. The, the free thinking is what makes us great, so this will be no different. But, um, I guess, uh, oh, boy, I, I, let me just, let me try to articulate this in my, in my mind. Is there, um, is there a situation where, uh, where a commissioner here can, can overstep? Is there, um, do, do you foresee something like that? I mean, do you, do you, I don't think I'm articulating this the, the way that I'd like to. Are we going to be guiding what they look at, and then they're gonna, here's a good example. Sorry, sorry for running around. Our planning commission doesn't involve itself in events. Okay, so you don't find our planning commission talking about doing events, nor do we find our Community Services Commission weighing in on whether a community should have more parking or something of that nature. You see those distinct differences? What differences exist here with this commission, if any? I hope I articulated that, that correctly. It's a little esoteric, I understand.
You know, I think, I think the, the mission and the scope and the, and the purpose that's been laid out here is, is probably far more broad and reaching than any of our current defined boards and commissions. So I could envision this commission finding things within their scope and their purpose that, that touch almost every department in the City of Temecula. And that's, that's one of the major differences I, I would see here. So many of the others are narrowly defined. As you, as you said, you got public traffic safety, and you got streets and safety, and they're, they're kind of focused there. But it doesn't preclude them from weighing in on, on, on housing projects that, that might spill into a street and speeds and speed limits and, and roadway configurations and things of that nature. So I, I think it's going to be up to the professional staff to, to really help guide them and support this new commission and steer their ideas, answer their questions, and, and really help them become successful, you know, here. So, um, thank you, Aaron. That's good.
Are you kind of afraid of, uh, somebody going off on a tangent or something, Mike? Or, I mean, because that happens, that happens with us sometimes.
Well, since you asked me the question, I'll give you a short answer. I, I, you know, Temecula's always led the way. This is groundbreaking, and I have, um, I have every, every encouragement, this is going to lead the way again. But I also know that if it goes south and gets political, it could be a disaster. And that's a concern of mine, but I don't know there's an answer to it. I don't, I, I cannot endorse any sort of censorship. I would just want the parameters, and it looks like Aaron answered it as adequately as it can, that the parameters, which are broad, be well-defined. Or this type of commission, it could do several things. It could use racism to combat racism. You know, we don't want to have that occur.
Right.
We don't want it, want it to become a political platform for anybody, although, how do you censor that? Anybody has a right to run. We got commissioners running for city council right now, so you can't censor that either. I'm just saying that, um, it's, it's very broad, as the city manager said, and that broadness might come with inherent troubles, but I can't predict the future, but at least I brought it up.
No, but you know, I think the good thing in that case is that, and we've had a few, we've had a few issues, not, not very many in, in the thirty years we've been a city. But I think if you're having issues and, you know, it's obvious that somebody's just continuously, you know, out politicizing and trying to stir up trouble and not sticking to the agenda. And we have some, we have, we can remove commissioners.
Let me give you a more precise answer, or more precise question, Mr. City Manager, you may weigh in on this. And truly, I, I'm, I, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, shake the barrel here, but I want to answer these questions before we move on.
We want to make sure we have, we have a, you know.
I want it to work.
Yes, yeah, a doorway.
Let me be clear, my questions are to have it work. Let's say there's an officer-involved shooting, okay? And it includes, um, somebody or one, one of these definitions, whether it's black, Asian, who knows whatever, okay? Can this commission take it upon themselves to study this and look into it and make a decision about it? It seems that the broad scope that we're talking about will enable them to do that. That could compromise many things in the city. That's a concern. And, 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 you know, again, I don't want to predict this, I want to make it work. But you can see where that could start to go south. Oftentimes, when we as a council are told about things, we know things other people can't know, just because they're involved in litigation and they're closed-session items and they're of confidence. We, these things are hot-button issues.
I guess in that, you know, in that case, I would want to know why. You know, what do you, what do, what do you expect to get out of it, get out of an investigation? I mean, obviously, it's going to, you know, stir the pot and, and, but, but I, I think, I, I think in that case, I would say, why, you know, why do you want to do it? And if there's no good reason, and if it's not, if it's outside of their purview.
Censoring at that point. So I want to speak from a safe place right now.
Yeah.
From a safe place. As we said in our resolution, officer-involved shootings among black men across the United States has spurred this discussion. Should that happen, God forbid, in the City of Temecula, okay? We, right now, under our contract with the sheriff, um, let him handle that, and the Sheriff's Department handles that.
Right.
But with, wi- wi- without putting in some parameters such as this, and that's just one example, okay? What is the parameters under those conditions this commission would operate under? Based on what I'm hearing, anybody on that commission could put that on the agenda for discussion, and they can make an advisory decision up to the City Council, and the City Council may not be able to address it for a myriad of reasons.
Matt, were you waving your hand?
And I'm looking at witnesses, okay?
Yeah, I know, I am too. That's why I wondered if, you know, but we do have the, we would have the authority to, you know, remove a commissioner for whatever reason, but it would have to be very, you know, egregious. You're freezing up on us.
And be able to communicate. It could be like the comments of defunding the police that came up tonight, okay? Though, thank goodness, we were able to talk about that and, and what have you. But I do want to hear from Zach and Matt and, and other, again, I want to make this work, but these are just some of the concerns. And I said, it's like a dead horse, and I don't want to keep beating it. If I'm in the minority here, so be it.
Well, I heard the same thing from community members. So Matt, Zach, you want to go?
I'm, I, I, I'm just wondering what the, uh, what the, what the concern might be if a commission of this sort took up a, a topic that they wanted to address, right? I mean, look, if, if, if there were, you know, using your hypothetical on an officer-involved shooting or whatever, there are constraints, because we contract Riverside Sheriff's, we all understand those issues, right? And, and I think it will take a bit, just like when any of us got on the City Council, we all came here with an idea, right? And we said, well, we have, you know, this issue or this initiative or this thing that we want to bring forward. And, and then once you get here, you realize, well, it's not just that simple, right? There's, there's usually a whole myriad of things that we, we find out as we go through this process. And, you know, simply coming in and saying, you know, hey, I think we need a stop sign at the corner of, you know, First and Main. You know, it's never that simple, right? And so I think there's going to be a calibration process and a learning curve for anybody who's involved in the commission to sort of understand how, how, you know, the basics of how all of this works first. And we all went through that learning process, so we, I think, in some, some respects, take that for granted now, right?
Yes, yes.
But, but certainly, if there were something along the lines of an officer-involved shooting that, that rose to the level of, you know, questions of, of, you know, community concern or, you know, whatever might be, well, I, I would hope that the council itself would also get engaged in that conversation, Sheriff's Department, not just a diversity, you know, commission, right? And so, you know, there are certain items that, that rise to a level that's so great that, you know, yes, we'd like the commission, just like any of our commissioners, to be involved in that conversation. However, you know, it, it's going to be a much broader conversation with a lot of, you know, additional layers that we, we, you know, we have to deal with.
So you think it's be on a case-by-case basis?
Well, a- and I think we'll learn as we go through this process, but, you know, but I, I mean, like the, like the rest of you, you know, I, I, I looked very closely at the cities who have adopted these types of commissions and their, you know, our city clerk gave us a great sort of rundown of all of those cities. And so I kind of did my, you know, homework and poked around on their websites and looked at their news feeds and other things to kind of see the, what, what is it that they have been working on and doing? And each community has its own character, to be certain, right? And, and so I, I, I think the, the intent really comes from not just, you know, from the City Council saying, hey, we, you know, this is, this is the plan that we laid out, this is what we would like to see occur, but also the kind of topics and issues that happen within, within our own community, right? You know, and so that drives, from what I've seen, that tends to drive the, the conversation. And, and clearly, people are passionate about this issue.
Oh, yeah.
And, and so I think there's, so, you know, like I say, there's going to be, there's going to be an opportunity for, for, you know, a lot of folks to get engaged. And it's not just the commission, but the community itself to get engaged in this conversation. And I think that's an important thing. I really do. And, you know, I, I, again, and Mike, you said it earlier, was, you know, there's, there's a lack of, of direct authority that's divested into the commission. We're not able to divest that authority to them. But, you know, the value I see is, you know, they are, you know, whoever is going to be on this commission, the whole intent is to represent our community and represent voices and perspectives in our community that may not necessarily be on the council. And, and, and may have a different perspective, and I, I, I encourage it. I'd, I'd love to be able to have those conversations. That's what I said earlier this evening was, you know, it's important for us, and Mike, you've said this before, is to have that safe area where we can have these conversations. Because now that we're, now that we've begun this process, it's important for, for us to, you know, help it, you know, evolve and, and help it match the character of what the City of Temecula is trying to accomplish. And I think the, the resolutions, the language, all the work that, you know, Randy and Aaron and, and others had put into this really captured all of our comments in this. And I would hope that anybody we appoint to the commission really takes all of that to heart and, and, you know, and, and brings forward, you know, a perspective that's important. I trust our community. I trust Temecula. I think we all do. And I think that, you know, however this, this plays out in the future, I'm, I'm, you know, very positive and very much looking forward to seeing that, that new kind of representation. And, you know, if it forces us to have tough conversations along the way that are uncomfortable and, and challenging, then, then so be it. That's, that's why we're here, and we shouldn't shy away from that.
Matt, well, well explained. I'm gonna, my last comment on this is that I know we're going to be selecting them later this year, and, and I, and I know we'll, we'll pick the best candidates and we'll try to get an accurate representation of the community. As it gets implemented, because I won't be here, I just want to emphasize that safe place to have the discussion. It, and, and you guys will have to be the keepers of that, the, the future City Council, where people cannot be afraid to talk, and, and no matter what their color, race, age, whatever, we, we all know the, the definition. So Matt, thank you, and, and I'm good.
And I think that's part of the commission's charge, Mark, Mike, is to help to foster that type of environment throughout the city where people feel comfortable talking. So, and I love that. Randy had, Randy did have a, a comment or an explanation.
Oh, I, I just wanted to mention with respect to all of our other commissions as well. We, we as professional staff, as the department liaisons, work strongly within, with our commissions, within the role and the purpose that you as a council have approved for us. So, and for the commission. So anytime an idea comes up to discuss anything, I think that first step will be, does this fall under the role as approved by the City Council? And does this actually fall under the purpose of one of those bullet points as well? And while the, the, the language is somewhat broad to allow for flexibility, I think there's still that first foundational step that you have to overcome, that hurdle, to, to, to kind of put, make sure that it is appropriate, that the discussion is appropriate. Is this in our role, and is this in our purpose? And then let's move on to the next step. So that's just something from a professional staff. That's usually how we, we would look at it.
So does that give you a comfort level, Mike?
Well, you know what, it, it, I think it's about as comfortable as I can get, because as Matt said, I think it's just going to have to be a, a community learns in the process of doing it, and, and eventually, it will, it will look like Temecula, and it will, it will conform to Temecula. I have faith in that.
Good. Zach?
Yeah.
Long time coming, sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm patiently waiting over here. And, and it's kind of interesting, you all have sort of summed up my notes. And so I feel like we're, we're all sort of on the same page, and I, and I think, you know, so I have notes of like trusting staff, right? And so Randy just sort of hit that home. And coming from a commission, and I believe I talked about this last week, is, is trusting in our residents and trusting in the community, and I have. and trusting in the community. And I have full trust in them and, and want to see, and I'm excited to see what's going to come out of this commission. Um, we want to foster dialogue, right? Like, that's the whole goal of this, is to create a, a space for, to have the uncomfortable conversation. Like, let's have those conversations. So that's it. And then, you know, we heard of this in some of the public comments and, and, and the idea that, you know, we don't want it to become political, right? And, and, and there are certain political aspects of, of everything, of just daily life, but, but there's nothing inherently political about equity. I mean, there's, equity is not a political topic. I mean, if someone's fighting for equity, that's not a political battle that they're fighting. So, you know, this is something that, um, while there will probably be some commissioners that will run for office, much like you said, uh, Mike, that, you know, that, that's already happening. I was a commissioner and now I'm here. So this is just part of it. But the reality is, yeah, yeah, it's great. I mean, the reality is, is we give people a place to have a conversation and have our community have our conversation. So I'm clearly looking forward to that and, and, and the years to come. And, and I think, Mike, you know, the, the council will be a, a good, uh, a good gauge and a good keeper for, for all our commissions, honestly, moving forward. So.
Um, you know, I, I did have one question, uh, going back, because there was one word used in your report that is sometimes a hot button word, and that is stipend. Oh. Stipend. So could you, um, share with us what, you know, the tremendous salaries or stipends that the, that the commissioners and the council get, you know?
Sure. Happy to. So again, that is actually provided in our Temecula municipal code. And, um, per meeting, um, the commissioners receive $100. Um, so every month, a commissioner on this particular commission meeting once a month would receive $100. And when a meeting is canceled or does not occur, that stipend is not provided.
Right.
So, um, it's really more to, um, to go ahead and reimburse them for any expenses and time, although it falls very short. A couple, uh, I believe it was that council member Nagar's suggestion, um, a year or two ago, we did a community, uh, surrounding city survey of what, um, the stipend was. And, um, ours was, uh, averaged based on what the other cities in the area pay for their, uh, board committee and commission members as well.
Mike, you and I got $50. Didn't pay for the gas.
Yeah. If, if, if I, um, emphasize something, a lot of people were, might be thinking, again, that they show up at, at this commission or any commission shows up at a meeting and they get $100.
Oh, no.
And, and, and for an hour's worth of work. It's not the case. First of all, this commission, I can assure you, is probably going to be spending two or three hours of meeting. Okay? Particularly in the beginning.
Yes.
Second of all, um, all of our commissioners are out in the community in special events like you wouldn't believe. And so they are really not getting paid for anything. In fact, at the end of the day, it's a labor. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Heck, Zach, how much money do you spend on silent auctions at some of those events? You're, you're, you're probably like three years behind.
Yeah, more than the $50 I was getting for a while.
Yeah. So it's a labor of love. We do it because we love the city and, you know, we love to do it. So, um, any more questions, any more ideas, any more concerns?
If there's no, if there's no public comment, I'll.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clean up. Okay, so we do have public comment.
Okay.
Um, yes, we have four public comments. The first public comment is by Kathy Gallant. I live in the city of Temecula and have just read the above resolution that was approved by our city council. I oppose the resolution and the inclusion of the commission that is going to be formed. The city of Temecula has always been a model of diversity since its inception. Temecula and its surrounding sphere of influence do abide by the important words in the Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident and that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I feel from the wording of the resolution and the formation of a committee that the approved resolution is divisive and nature to our community. Council members have chosen to adopt this resolution at a time that we are experiencing a shelter in place order and cannot attend meetings to personally contest a move to appoint a commission to be paid for by the citizens of Temecula. There are many questions. Who will appoint these commission members? Will these members be legal and registered voters of this county city? Will these members currently reside in Temecula? These and other questions should be answered to Temecula residents. This resolution and the appointment of a commission, which is totally unauthorized by the resident, residents of Temecula, should be either rescinded or tabled until the people of this community can attend council meetings to discuss and understand exactly what is involved before a commission is actually formed. The next comment is Berlin Bodman. I object to the wording of the resolution being considered tonight. Please vote no or at least table the motion until you have received more input from our community. Our city has always been inclusive and adhered to the constitution. We do not need to apologize to anyone. In fact, other communities should use Temecula as an example. The next speaker is, I believe the last, the last name is Brian. Temecula does not need a resolution, which creates yet another layer of bureaucracy, adds more cost to our already ever increasing city budget, and is in no way needed. This is the 21st century, and civil rights laws and inclusion have been around for decades. The people of Temecula demand that this commission not be formed. At the very least, since we are all sequestered in our homes and can't attend city hall meetings, this needs to be tabled and readdressed at such time as the state of California has reopened and normal city functions like real meetings at a real city hall building are resumed. There is barely any business tax revenue being generated, so why are you doing this? It is fiscally irresponsible. You need to rescind what you have done and again, leave the subject alone until such time as normal operations of city government resume. Pandering to small groups who do not live here is not only cowardly, but sets up future more evasive demands that are not applicable to this community. You showed your backsides when that lawyer Shankman forced you into going to district. This is another precarious ledge on a slippery slope that is causing folks to leave not only Temecula, but California itself. Um, lastly, the mayor already resigned to, to, due to the threats from BLM, do the right thing and rescind this now. Um, the last two comments were included in this because they're asking for a tabled motion, and this was the only motion that was a tabled resolution, and this was the only item for action. And then I have one more item. Um, I recognize, and it's from Alicia Wilkins. I recognize that it may be true, based on your experience, that we live in a city that there are no racial issues, there are no tensions, and that we are just one big happy family. However, speaking from my own experience as a person of color who has lived here for nearly 20 years, this is not the case. But because I have also had the opportunity to experience the good, the beautiful, and the inclusive parts of the city, I am as equally convinced that we can do more. In fact, I see the Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Ready Commission as an illustration of the city's commitment to do more, a commitment to ensure that all Temeculans are considered valued members of this city. I understand there may appear to be many voices coming out tonight to demand that you deny your, deny the voices of your constituents. However, I would encourage you to consider the words in 1 John 3:17, which state, "But if anyone has this world's good resources and sees his brother in need, yet closes his heart of compassion against him, how can the love of God live and remain in him?" As council members, you are stewards of our city's resources, which can use, which can use to, as, as stated, which can be used, as stated in this Bible verse, and see to the needs of your brother or to act in an un-Christ-like manner and be void of compassion. Let us do what is wise. Let us do what is good and move forward as a city. I urge you to support the resolution establishing the Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Ready Commission. And that, Madam Mayor Protem, is the last of the comments.
Okay, thank you. And, and to address one of those, um, letters, um, the cost will be $700 a month. For, you know, $100 per commissioner, right? So $700 a month. And, right, and then, um, staff time, and staff is working here anyway. So, um, yeah, it's, it's not a huge expense to the city. And, uh, again, they're appointed by the city council. They must be residents of Temecula. Um, what else did he ask? Uh, I think that's probably good enough. Um, you know, uh, they'll be held accountable to the, the guidelines of the commission. Mike, you want to add something?
No, I was just, um, I was just going to say, uh, um, I'm going to move the item and just want to direct people, I, I have something I placed on the agenda that's coming up next that is also going to shed some light on this topic.
Okay.
Listen, but for now, I, I moved the item.
Okay, so the motion?
Second.
Second? All right, could we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Protem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember, uh, Nagar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Yes.
That was very positive, Zach.
It's diverse.
Very, yes, that was very good.
Gotta mix it up.
You wake me up here. Um, item number 10. Approved recommendation to rename Paula Community Park as Friendship Park at the request of Councilmember Nagar. Do you, are you giving the report? Is staff giving the report?
I think I want to kick it off.
Both. Okay, so take it away, whomever.
Okay. Madam Mayor Protem, um, you know, although this is another virtual Zoom council meeting, it's kind of fitting that you're in the Jeff Comicuro council chambers for this item. Because Jeff used to say that play is the work of children. And along those lines, what's being championed here tonight by another council statesman is that all children, no matter socioeconomic background, ethnicity or ability, are welcome, appreciated, and loved. So the item proposed this evening with the full support of the Community Services Commission to rename, rename, uh, Paula Community Park as Friendship Park comes at the request of that person, that's Councilmember Michael Garth, which we in the community services world so appreciate, because in essence, it is inspired by an old proverb that states, "If you teach children how they should live, they will remember it all their lives." Now, I know we're talking about a park amenity, but the impetus is to create a fun, representative, and welcoming destination place for children that continues to solidify, normalize, and truly inclusive high quality of life enjoyed here in Temecula. So a simple concept of developing friendships through play, which in a reassuring way will remind us all that it really is a small world after all. So our other Mike, Mike Wooton,
Art video.
Will walk you through the item before further discussion and seeking council concurrence. So with that, Mike.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor Protem and members of the council. I'm going to put up a slideshow here real quick, so just bear with me one second. All right, let's get it to load real quick. Okay, there we go. Uh, so during the city council meeting on July 28th, Councilmember Nagar publicly introduced a proposal for Paula Community Park to be renamed Friendship Park. Inspired by the city's commitment to diversity and inclusion, it was shared that challenges of inclusion, often associated with racial, ethnic, cultural, and ability differ, differences, are usually a result of learned behavior, not genetics. Historically, Temecula has demonstrated success in community recreation and specifically human and inclusive services, which makes the timing perfect for this proposed name change. As the playground and park renovations are completed at this location to create inclusive play structures and an environment for all children, rebranding this park will reflect these improvements, along with the city's commitment to inclusion, diversity, and equality. Friendship Park is meant to provide children of all ethnicities, races, and abilities with an opportunity to see themselves and others in a fun, memorable, and safe play space that reflects the loving diversity of Temecula. That diversity will be captured with additional proposed park elements that continue to de- demonstrate that new friends can be made daily as part of the Temecula way. As Councilmember Nagar stated, when kids play together, they don't draw distinctions between race and ability. So as a continuation of the city's efforts to integrate diversity and inclusion seamlessly into every aspect of Temecula's quality of life, Friendship Park will consist not just in name change, but a cultural shift that will add to the programming and educational opportunities. Uh, so the next slide, um, here it comes. Uh, this next slide shows the developer renderings of the upcoming renovation project, which will transform the existing playground into an inclusive playground to be used by children of all abilities. Construction at, is anticipated to start in March of next year, and some of the highlights include a fence perimeter, ADA accessibility, ample shade, swings and play structures for all ability levels, and a new family restroom. And then there is one final slide here, and, uh, so this final slide shows some additional design ideas that the city will look into incorporating into the park to fur- further encourage diversity and inclusivity. So lastly, on August 10th, pursuant to the city's parks and recreation facilities naming policy, staff introduced this proposal to, to the TCSD Commission, where it was approved unanimously to recommend the proposed name change and forward to city council for a final action. Uh, so that includes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone? I have one. Mike, where did, where did this idea come from?
Well, um.
You are, there's always an inspiration behind your.
There, there is. And, uh, am I next up? Betsy or you?
I think, I think Betsy, you're on mute. We have one other component, Madam Mayor Protem, that we'd like to just kind of fold into the stack.
Sorry, I thought, I thought that was it.
Yep.
Hi, Betsy.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Protem and city council members. Um, if the city council agrees to rename the park, um, the city manager's office thought this could be an ideal opportunity to begin modernizing the existing park monuments citywide. Uh, an example of our park monument that you will find at almost every park is at the top of your screen, the very familiar late 80s era turquoise and white sign monument. Uh, below it are some very conceptual ideas, just showing how the designs could incorporate various materials or the monuments could match the themes of the new playgrounds that are being updated citywide. Uh, Riverton Park, for example, was just recently updated to be Cabin in the Woods. Um, so updating our park signs and monuments citywide has been talked about on and off for years. Uh, and it may just make fiscal sense to begin with Friendship Park if indeed the council decides, uh, I mean, if indeed its name is already going to be updated. To clarify, we're not proposing to do this, to do these all at once, but just only as our parks and playgrounds, um, are improved. And with that, if you so agree, uh, this proposal is for you to consider authorizing the city manager to designate staff to work with the parks, uh, and, uh, recrea, the Parks Recreation and Community Services Subcommittee on this project.
Thank you, Betsy.
Insert here.
Madam Mayor Protem, may I?
Sure.
You asked me what the inspiration. First, there was the practical. Um, this, um, the renaming of this park has just been something on my radar screen for years. It's just, just like we changed the name of Paula Road to, to Chango Parkway.
Uh huh.
There was really no connection to the name of the park in the city. It just was, and it just kept, kept that way. Then, of course, the city council negotiated, um, by virtue of the development next door, um, an upgrade to the park and also using a special needs component. And then the city started to dive into all of the inclusion and diversity work that much of which we just, uh, completed today. We did the resolution, a couple of. So this all kind of folds in. But I will tell you, um, what some of the motivation is. It is, um, you know, having a special needs child myself, it sort of makes you notice things that maybe, um, some may not notice. I don't bring it up too much anymore because I really don't want to be, you know, have, have special needs be seen as, uh, being victims, okay? I'd rather see them as being empowered. If I had my, um, idea with Friendship Park, it will be ever-evolving. It will be the center of cultural events. It will be an area where, where we'll celebrate all kinds of different cultures, abilities, races. It will be a true place of friendship. I'd like to see elements of the park that depict all of that, different races, ethnicity. It's, I can, I'm having trouble with that word.
Ethnicities.
Thank you. And also abilities. I, I'd love to see them depicted in a way so, so that when a child comes to this park, not only do they see themselves and go, oh, okay, there I am, but also see all the other depictions of all the other different types of children and abilities and races and say, oh, that's just normal. Kids, when left alone, will always find a way to play without those distinctions. And to quote you when we opened up the special needs park, when we had almost 200, 300 kids there, you asked me, can you tell the difference between the special needs Eagles, uh, Eagles or Park, between the special needs children and the typical children? The answer was no, and that was the whole point.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, um, I think, uh, I'll share some personal stories too. Um, and I'll, again, I'll try to keep it, uh, you know, as, as brief as I can. You know, as a parent, as a special, of a special needs child, you know what, um, I encounter often? It's not the form of racism, but it fits in, in that inclusion area. And I'll tell you, my son is very normal, except if you focus on his abnormalities. Other kids will go. Other kids will go around him and they may say hi. He may not answer right away. Or he may have what they call echolalia and repeat what they say. But if you ask him one more time, or if you wait long enough, five seconds to listen to him, he'll respond. But oftentimes, that happens so fast, I see one kid talk to another and they start laughing at him. And they omit him and they leave. And you know what? He's none the wiser, you know, he's not, doesn't really, doesn't know what he's, what's, what's happening. But I can't help to think that in many of the things that we're doing, that other people, as it relates to other inclusion, as it relates to races, why, I can't imagine anybody not feeling safe in this town. That's why we have to look at it in relation to racism. I, I can't imagine drawing those distinctions. What I just described to you, we encounter all the time as a family. And it hurts, but we live with it. That's how it works. You, you live with it. So this is a place where I'm hoping this city council takes ownership. And it's not just my idea, but you all put your elements into it. As to what you want to see, whether it's tiles on the wall, whether it's benches, where it's donations, where, who knows? The sky's the limit on where, on what can be done here. And this will be a place that'll just be ever evolving. And I could see school kids picnicking there. I can see like their third grade, you know, tour through Old Town. This is where they eat lunch. Yeah, I mean, it's just got possibilities. Erin, I think you had some, some thoughts on the topic and I didn't want to leave without, I know you wanted to say some things. Did I cover it well enough?
You did great. I'm, I'm going to wait till you finish and then I'll, I'll give my thoughts. I don't want to cut you off. Keep going.
I want to say one last thing because you know what? I, I'm focused on special needs. One last thing, because this is, this is probably the last big thing I'll do before the year's over, but we've all seen the child in a wheelchair who has cerebral palsy or spina bifida and can't really communicate. And can you imagine going around all your life, living in your brain, but nobody paying attention to you? Nobody stopping to say hi or come play with me or, or telling you a joke or whatever. You're a byproduct just because you can't. This is the culture of Temecula has heart that I am wanting to promote. And everything that we've done up to this point, this is just more whipped cream on it. So I'm done. That's it.
Okay, now we're both crying.
Yeah.
You know, what you had promoted previously in the programs that we have in our restaurants where families with special needs can now have a special time that they can go in and it's quiet and the lights may be dimmed and really in Temecula, there are opportunities to take special needs children, but they don't have those same opportunities in other cities. And we make, you know, things available in our parks and, and at the theater and, you know, all kinds of things. So I think this is just one, another one of those great ideas.
And race as well, Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
No distinction between color or ethnicity. It does not matter. And kids will prove that.
Yeah, children don't care. Children don't care. So any other comments?
Can I, Councilman, can I just jump in, finish the staff report here and then I'll get out?
There's more.
Well, there is because Mike and I have been, you know, I've had the privilege of listening to his vision and talking with him about ideas and, and, and I, I'd be remiss if I didn't just share a couple more ideas that didn't get mentioned. But you know, the city of Temecula for over a decade has, has done a tremendous job under Mike's leadership on inclusive services and educating ourselves and our staff and working with nonprofits in the community. And, and just like the amenities at the Temecula Duck Pond that are honoring to our sister city in Japan. And when we have them, we have delegations here, we, we make it a point to take them to that park and to that destination to, to showcase those amenities. What you guys are considering tonight, as was mentioned, is far more than just naming a park, right? That's, this, this is so much deeper if staff and we catch the vision of how we program that space going forward. We know it's already been approved to be an inclusive park, developer funded. But how we program it as staff, there are so many ideas. For example, the High Hopes Program, long established adults with special needs and disabilities. We've been supporting them at the Mary Phillips Senior Center. That's their home base. Guess what? Maybe Friendship Park can become their home base for their, their weekly meetings. You know, for years and years, we do the special games at Great Oak High School just down the street. It's, it's our equivalent of Special Olympics. Well, guess what? Wouldn't that be pretty cool to sort of have the pregame and the postgame at Friendship Park for these special athletes that are competing down the street? And, and what about the Global Citizen and Viticulture Program? What about giving them a place that they feel connected to as we support them, their mission and their growth in, in forming careers? And so I'll stop there, but, but I'd be remiss if I didn't just share some of the excitement that staff has as it relates to a name change and what we can do with such a name change as far as programmatic elements at that property. So with that, thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman Gar for bringing this forward. And I know Councilman Ron wanted to say something as well.
Matt?
Yeah, just real quick, you know, Mike, you, you brought this to my attention a little while ago. And, you know, immediately it struck a nerve, right? It's, 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 it's a beautiful transition for that park as we start to reimagine it. The, you know, the idea of, you know, I was talking, I think to Kevin, I think you and I were kind of talking about the park and I, you know, immediately threw out some ideas where it was like, you know, wouldn't it be cool for all the kids, you know, of all, all races, all languages to see signs that said welcome or said friendship or something? And everybody, as they're walking up there, saw that and recognized that, right? With regard to the signage, I'll just throw this out there. If we're talking about redoing our, our park signs, I really like the idea. You don't have to agree with me here tonight, but I really like the idea of integrating the arches we have in Old Town.
I like that.
That's become kind of a monument to, you know, to our city and it's recognizable as, you know, as our identity. Bringing that to the rest of the city to identify our parks might be a fun, you know, way of, of sort of recognizing it and maybe adapting it, you know, specifically to the different kinds of parks there. But, but getting back to, you know, Mike, what, what you're doing here, it's just another piece of, of you leaving your heart in a, a special place in, in Temecula. And I, you know, I, I know it was a difficult decision for you to ask, you know, you know, and to let us know that you're, you're going to step down at the end of the year. But, but you need to know, and, and I'm sure you already know this, but I, it needs to be said, you know, that I am here and I know my colleagues are here to carry forward your, your dream and your vision for Temecula and make sure that we continue doing what we're doing in this city for special needs in this community because it's unique. You know, you don't see it anyplace else. It's, it's serving as a model for the rest of our, our region and the rest of the country. And, and we can't, we can't forget that. And so I know you're not going anywhere. I know where you live and, and we're going to keep you engaged in this because this is, this is an important part of, of who we are as a community. And that's, uh, needs to be said that, you know, we're, we're going to continue that.
Our, our parks were Temecula's identity in, in the early years. I mean, they really were. So, well, as long as we're talking about parks, I have a request. Could we please change the Temecula Duck Pond sign? Because it says Temecula Duck across the top and then Pond on the bottom instead of Temecula Duck Pond?
It's on the list.
Temecula Duck. Okay. Well, every time I drive by, I realize it's not on the same level as what you're proposing, Mike. But, you know, I just thought I'd throw that as an extra. Okay. Well, Zach, anything?
Yeah, I think I want to go in front of Matt next time because I was just going to say that, you know, Mike, you know, this, you're leaving your legacy here with us and, and be confident that we're going to carry that forward. Because I truly believe what we're doing here with the ready commission and, and then, and this is really just the beginning. I'll just leave you with a quick, just personal story as, as our, our children transition to this online learning. Like I'm sitting in their class with them, my fourth grader today, and I'm looking at a screen much like this, right? And it's a very diverse screen. And the kids today are growing up in a much different world than a world that I grew up in and we all grew up in. And they're talking about FA and, and Laos and Cambodia and, and different countries because that's where these children are from. And so it's just, it's just very interesting and it's fitting really that we're moving in this direction. So, you know, I, I can't thank you enough for bringing this forward and then really just will continue to be the catalyst for, for everything we do moving forward in the city.
I'm not saying anything about you, Mike, because I've already cried enough tonight.
I don't want to cry anymore.
No, me either. All right. So we have a beautiful proposal on the table. So I need a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, we do actually.
No public comments. I keep forgetting public comments tonight. I think I have a version to public comments for some reason.
We actually have four public comments. The first one is actually from Sienna Boyd. McDonald's Play Places are supposed to be a heaven for kiddos, especially in the 90s when grabbing a Happy Meal and playing at the Play Place was the ultimate source of fun. Rewind back to when I was six years old and my mom took me to one of the McDonald's in Temecula to eat and play. I saw a little girl my age in a dress with blonde pigtails. She looked nice enough, so I went up to her and asked if she wanted to play. She looked at me and politely said, I can't, sorry. I asked her why, and she pointed to my arm and said, because of the color of your skin. As a six-year-old, this was the first time I noticed color. I noticed I was different than her. And to her, that was deemed as less than. As a six-year-old, it made sense. Of course, I couldn't play with her. I am different. So I shrugged it off and played by myself. Six-year-olds don't come up with, I can't play with you because of the color of your skin by themselves. This was an ideology that was taught to her by a parent or guardian who saw me, a tan Filipino Middle Eastern mix, as less than and not worthy to play with. This is an ideology now as a 28-year-old woman that I have fought to combat. I watch my own friends raise their children to see color and differences and to celebrate them. And someday when I have my own children, I will teach them the same. Thank God that I had parents who I could run to, who would remind me that my worth is not found in the opinion of others. But some children are not as lucky. Some children have to live with the weight of discrimination of others, defining their identity for the rest of their lives. That is where Friendship Park comes in. The idea of Friendship Park champions the inclusion of every race, every disability, every difference that makes us all unique and infinitely valuable. Maybe if a park like that had existed when I was little, the girl in the pretty dress with the blonde pigtails would have seen differences as a reason to play and learn rather than a barrier. My prayer for her is that she has overcome the barriers that were instilled in her and has become an inclusive 28-year-old woman as I strive to be. The next comment is by Emily Carrion. My name is Emily Carrion and I'm a resident of Temecula. I am writing in regards to the potential renaming of Paula Community Park. I appreciate the sentiment of the renaming, but I'm also confused about the rationale provided in the agenda report. I am hoping that before council members pass the resolution, Councilmember Nigar could explain why Paula Park, why Paula Community Park specifically should be renamed. My understanding, and please correct me if I am wrong, is that the name refers to the Paula Band of Mission Indians, which is made up of people identifying as Quipeno and Loseno Indians. Loseno Indians inhabited the land that Temecula now sits on. The arrival of Europeans in the Temecula Valley in 1797 had, like elsewhere in the United States, devastating effects on the indigenous people's survival and culture. For example, in 1847, hundreds of people were killed in what is known as the Temecula Massacre. And in 1875, the Loseno people were forced off of their ancestral land by Temecula Valley ranchers. The temecula.gov website lists 39 parks. It does not promote diversity and inclusion to rename the specific park that pays tribute to Temecula's indigenous people. Representation matters. The name of Paula Community Park is important. It reminds us of our city's complicated past and by doing so commits us to doing better. Renaming Paula Community Park would be counterproductive to the city council's efforts on equity, diversity and inclusion. I suggest council members rename one of the 38 parks whose name has less important historical meaning. I also suggest council members consider having a land acknowledgement statement before the city council meetings to recognize the forced removal of Luain.
Luceno.
Luceno Indians from the land we now have the pleasure and privilege to live, work and play on. Unlike renaming Paula Community Park, a land acknowledgement statement would also add to the council members' efforts related to diversity and inclusion. The next comment is by Sean Dolis. 25-year resident of Temecula, I am opposed to the renaming of Paula Park to Friendship Park. We should be embracing our native history and be proud of our indigenous city history. I am proud of the name of Temecula because it is the only original indigenous city name that has been maintained in the state of California. The idea of renaming Paula Park is only appeasing a minority number of people and should not be considered racist. We should not be stripping away the original native names of our indigenous city history. And the last comment is from Catherine Frederick. Please do not change the name of this park without a satisfactory reason in doing so. That's all of the comments, Mayor Pro Tem Edwards.
Okay, thank you. And I think we heard council comments and discussions. So Mike, do you want to make the motion?
Yes, I do. I'll go ahead and move the item.
All right. I need a second.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. So it's called the rule.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Yes.
Thank you. But my concluding comment is it belongs to all of you to do what you think is friendship. It's evolving. So take it from here.
I think that's great. You know what else came out of this discussion? Dreamcatcher Hawkins. Right? Okay. Oh my goodness, it's time for departmental reports. Anything? Receiving file only. Okay. So I'm going on down the list. Commissioners, I see commissioners. Who wants to go first? Brad, you're not muted.
Nope, I'm happy to go first.
Want to go first?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, council members. The Traffic Safety Commission is going to meet this Thursday virtually. We have three items on our agenda. Two come from the Temecula Valley School District. One is for a review of a high visibility crosswalk similar to Great Oaks at Temecula Valley High. The other is for James L. Day Middle School. The school district has contacted the city and, and would like to discuss a traffic management plan. The third thing we'll be looking at is that Nighthawk Pass has been re-slurried and the residents are divided on whether to restore the traffic calming striping. And so we'll be looking at that.
Oh, yeah.
Our report.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Eric, do I go?
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem Edwards. City council members, staff, colleagues and community. And thank you, Jonathan. As the Chair of the Community Services Commission, I have the pleasure of reporting tonight about the arts and cultural programming that our city is able to offer in person and virtually during these times. On Saturday, August 22nd, the Temecula Valley Museum team launched the new free outdoor exhibit experience from 10 to 2 PM. And this is going to continue for the next three Saturdays. Three local fine artists are featured each day and museum artifacts are cleverly displayed at Sam Hicks Monument Park while adhering to all health and safety protocols. And on Sunday, August 30th, experience Jazz at the Merc, virtually, courtesy of Temecula Theater's longtime producing partner, Sherri Williams. Trio de Janeiro, streaming from Sprague Land at 4 PM for free on facebook.com/jazzfromsherry and that's Sherri with a Y. Award-winning musicians Lori Bell on flutes, Ron Satterfield on guitar and vocals, and percussionist Tommy Aros formed the group Trio de Janeiro, a high-energy Brazilian tinge jazz trio. Needless to say, TCSD has got your weekend plans covered. Stay healthy, safe and connected to Temecula. This concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? No? Nope. Okay, Lynne, good evening. How's the planning commission?
We are good. Last week, we, we voted on a planning application for, actually the applicant is Griffin Living. Last week, we, we voted on a planning application for, actually the applicant is Griffin Living, and it's for a 91,000-square-foot, two-story, 107-unit assisted living and memory care facility. And it's going to be built on the southeast corner of Margarita Road and Solana Way. So that's been vacant for quite some time, obviously, forever, I guess. So we're excited about that. It's, your architecture, everything looks really nice. It's gonna be a, a great addition for that corner. And that is what we voted on last week. So, thank you.
Right next to ABC Preschool, right?
Yep.
Yep. ABC Child Care Center.
Any questions on that from anybody? Nope?
That's it.
All right. Keep us safe.
Good to see you, Lynae.
Good to see you guys. Thanks.
All right, so do we have the public safety report this evening? I see Chief down in the corner.
Good evening. I'm here, sorry.
Good evening.
Hi. The report for this month is 7,163 file numbers pulled. The tra, out of the traffic bureau, they wrote 1,348 traffic citations, arrested two, 22 DUIs, investigated 48 accidents. Our special team stats were 23 felony arrests for the month, five felony arrest warrant services, 43 misdemeanor on-view arrests with 149 misdemeanor arrest warrants served. Our investigations bureau were assigned 30 cases and they closed 53. Over in the mall, they had 52 calls for service and they made five misdemeanor arrests. We had 308 volunteer hours in the last month. That ends our stat report, but I want, did want to take a second and give a special thank you out to the city management team and the city council for your continued support of our sheriff's department and all the deputies that are working in the city of Temecula. We greatly appreciate your continued support. And I know I speak for Chief Crater when I thank you for supporting all the first responders that work in our area.
We do love and appreciate our officers and our first responders, so thank you for, thank you for those comments. All right, so the attorney, or city manager, you first, Erin. Anything?
Nothing further tonight, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Have a good night.
Thanks, Peter.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council tonight in closed session with respect to the case of Durrassi versus City of Temecula. The council, by a vote of three to zero, authorized us to settle that case with a dismissal by the petitioners and a waiver of the city's costs for that action. Councilmember Nigard did not participate due to a potential conflict of interest based on his business relationship with some principals at the Europa Village Project. And city manager Aaron Adams did not participate as well due to his wife's employment by visit Temecula Valley, which took a different position than the city. So with that, the case is now being settled on that basis and I have nothing further to report.
All right, thank you, Peter. So if we can get a motion and a second, we can adjourn.
Can we bring up a quick slide real quick? Hopefully we have a-
Oh, it's Matt. I see you now, Matt, sorry.
Yeah, no, no problem. I'd like to close this evening's meeting in memory of Jim Mitchell. We all knew Jim. He was a, a figure in our community for, for many, many years. He had a wonderful life, just, just such an incredible background in, in radio and, you know, news on television. And, and then, and then came here to Temecula and, you know, didn't just live a retired life, but a very active life and was a significant part of our, our fight against celebrity quarry, establishing local chapter of the Sierra Club. And just, just an incredible figure and, and man and a good friend of, of ours and, and mine. Very sorry for his passing and just wanted to close tonight's meeting in memory of him.
Oh, that's very nice. All right.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
No, but, but Jim, for many, many years, put on council election forums for Temecu over at Temecu Hills. And he put that all together. And, yeah, he was quite the patriot and I did not know he passed. Thank you.
Yeah, he was very sweet and, you know, and famous and very, very humble. So, yeah, I love that guy. All right, so we're gonna adjourn in the memory of Jim Mitchell. So, adjourned.
Good night.